Okay, well, good evening. Today is January 28th, 2021. It is 6:30 PM and this is a regular meeting of the Independent School District 191 School Board. Welcome. Calling this to order and welcome to anybody that is watching this now or in the future. Appreciate your interest in business of the school board. Director Connor, would you please lead us in the National Anthem? Or the Pledge of Allegiance, not the National Anthem. We resolved that earlier, didn't we?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent, thank you. First item of businesses to, we have a motion to approval of the agenda. May I have a motion for that, please?
Still moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right. Approval of the agenda has been moved by Director Chester and seconded by Director Hume. Any discussion? Other than Ms. Kenny's dog, apparently no discussion on approval of the agenda. So Ms. Kenny, would you please call the roll?
Chester?
Aye.
Connor?
Aye.
Hume?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Verb?
Aye.
Alt?
Aye.
Said?
Aye.
The motion passes anonymously. Unanimously, not anonymously. Next on the agenda is our information section of our meeting tonight. We will begin with a report about the revised budget of fiscal year 2021 and preliminary budget process, projected enrollment and revenue and expenditures. Speaking on this topic will be Dr. Teresa Battle, Superintendent and Lisa Ryder, Executive Director of Business Services. Dr. Battle, I will turn it over to you.
Chair, Miller, Directors of the Board. So we've come to the time in the budget cycle to look at our 2020 revised budget. And so Executive Director, Business Services Lisa Ryder will show the revised budget. Lisa?
Good evening, Chair Miller, Board Members, Superintendent Battle. As we begin tonight on the discussion regarding our revised budget, this is a typical time of year in which we are revising the budget. And this comes after first having had an adopted budget approved by the board last June. And then this fall, we went ahead and had our financial statement audit on the previous fiscal year of 2019, 2020. And so then about mid-year is when we typically then review our enrollment for the fall, our staffing for the fall, and all of the estimates that we did in the spring, which now we have a little bit firmer handle on, for example, federal grants and things of that nature. So it's very typical this time of year that we take a look at revising our current year budget. So tonight, as we begin this conversation, we go to the next slide. You'll see that the overview here is regarding providing information to the board and the community around our fiscal year 21 revised budget. The next slide talks about the agenda we'll cover tonight. This, along with a few extra slides that I added in related specifically to the CARES funding that we are receiving this year, these are the topics we're going to cover. And as we will discuss later in tonight's meeting, this is information that we'll be communicating out also with staff and with community members. So as we move into this, the next slide is our revised budget all funds page. This slide is very typical for us to show as this is, this is the recommendation that you see later in the agenda where the board will approve the total revenues and the total expenditures for each of the funds within our financials. This slide shows the amounts for each of these funds. And we will focus primarily in our conversation in the next few slides around the general fund, the first line. Just to note that at this point in time, due to the Government Accounting Standards Board number, Statement Number 84, last year, it was, it was, we needed to move our student activity accounts under board control and our flexible spending plan under the general fund. So those two items have been added in as well as the federal funds. So that's why if you were to compare from adopted to revised, you'll see that these, these numbers are significantly higher for both revenue and expenditure. And that would be the reason why. As you take a look at this, the general fund for revenues and expenditures, the net between those two is we are showing a budget for expenditures that is $536,494 more than the revenue budget for the same general fund, fairly close to being a balanced budget for the fiscal year. Let's move to the next slide. And as we do, we're going to talk about our revenue. Again, we're focusing on the general fund. So for the general fund revenue, as you can see, this is very typical for us to see a percentage of around 68% that is from state aid. And when I say state aid, it's the general and the categorical state aids. And then our property taxes are around the 23%. Our total revenue is $133.8 million. And of that amount, there is $4.1 million that is specific to the pandemic. And the remaining amount is our typical title type funds and other federal funds that we receive on a routine basis. But it has caused our federal aid percentage to increase more so than what you'd normally see. A normal year, it might be around 3% to 4%. This year, it is showing a higher percentage of 7%. Our next slide discusses restrictions. As we talk about revenue, oftentimes the revenue that we receive may have restrictions on them as to what we must use that money for. So these are some examples of what might be restricted funds. There is funds that we receive that are considered capital funds and can be only used for specific facilities projects. Our title funds, federal funds, are oftentimes designated for very specific purposes and require a specific line item budget. Title one, for example, you'll see we use that for our needs associated with our higher poverty rates and the needs of our students in that area. Our technology level levy that we receive is specifically for technology. We use it towards personnel and equipment. And then things like community education and food nutrition, we track and monitor those separately for their programming and services only. So they're entirely a separate fund from the general fund. So those are examples of what restrictions there might be on revenues. As we go to the next slide, we're going to start talking now about our general fund expenditures. There are two different ways to look at expenditures. And this particular way is about how are we spending it? Is it on salaries and benefits or personnel, which you see here is about 78%? Or is it on the other items? And so you can see that 22% of our current revised budget general fund expenditures is planned to be spent on supplies and other items. The next slide. Pardon me. Is a discussion of when we talk about 78% of our budget, expenditure budget, or 72.3% of it being on salaries and benefits, excuse me, 78% being salaries and benefits. Of that amount, sometimes people want to understand, well, how exactly is that broken down by the various different groups of employees that we have in our district? So that is the purpose of this slide is just to break down for those interested, the full-time equivalent of what we call an FTE of employees that we have on staff and their salary and benefit portion. The percentages you see there are simply just a percentage of the total that's on this sheet. It is not related to total expenditures, but rather just to give you a sense of, of all of these groups. For example, 70.89% are teachers. As we move on to the next slide, it talks about our expenditures in that second manner, which is by purpose. So oftentimes we want to know, okay, so we know we have 80, almost 80% in salary and benefits. But of our budget, how much is really spent on instruction and instructional support versus some of the other categories and areas? And so that's the intent of this particular graph. Again, same, same dollars we're talking about for expenditures, general fund only, current revised budget. But here is where the 72.3% is being spent towards instruction and instructional support. And then there's other categories broken down as well. As we take a look at this particular slide, you will note that this does include the funds that we also have identified for federal revenue expenditures too. Moving on to the next slide, there is a conversation every time we're working with our budget around what it is that is available to school districts from the state in what we call our general education formula allowance. And oftentimes at this legislative time period where the legislature gets to talking, the governor puts out his budget and, and then you have the House and the Senate, they're all talking about that general education formula allowance. For us, that's a portion of our revenue that is a part of the state aid. And as you can see by this graph, the dotted green line indicates what that general education formula allowance has been over the years. The red line indicates what it could have been if the change in inflation had been applied directly to the formula from year to year. And you also see here, there's a gap between the two lines. $639 to be exact for FY21 is the gap. And that does concern many school districts as it doesn't necessarily keep up because many of our expenditures do increase at the inflationary rate. And yet our revenue is not keeping pace. So that is a concern you will often hear from schools and a concern we bring to our legislators again this year in this session. As we take a look at our next slide, this is regarding our enrollment and how is enrollment used? Our budget is based upon the per pupil amount of dollars we receive for various different reasons. Often that formula does involve how many kids and how many dollars per kid. So if you have fewer students from year to year, that means then that there would be less dollars available. This can cause difficulties for schools budgets and balancing those class sizes as well. Our, as we take a look at our current enrollment, for example, you will note that from last year's final audited information for 1920 school year, compared to our revised budget current year, which was very close on the revenue side for state aid compared to what we did at adopted, we were only three students off. There is a significant reduction in revenue generated because of the enrollment being less than it was last year. So for us, for example, we needed to adjust our budget and we did this in our planning last spring by bringing it down that $5 million because we knew our revenue was going to be reduced by that amount. Every time you're talking about budgets, you're talking about revenues, you're talking about expenditures. So the last bullet is really talking about what happens with expenditures. If we're just focusing on expenditures, most often in school districts, you're going to have a traditional trend percentage increase that happens from year to year. If you did nothing about anything, that trend would be very consistent. Oftentimes when you do a look back, those percentages get a little bit skewed simply because we make efforts to try and condense our expenditures or reduce those expenditures and kind of control those as much as possible. But typically that percentage can be an amount like around 3.75%. And so on a budget our size, for example, that is quickly $5 million in one year that you could expect a budget to increase if all you were doing was just applying that straight flat percentage increase. We take a different approaches, we build our budget and we'll get into that a little further in a later segment on next year's budget this evening at a workshop. For now, for the revised budget, you can be assured that we've gone through our line item budgets and we've identified all the staff in the right places as well as the budgets that are necessary for the various program areas. What's unique this year, as we turn to the next slide, are the federal funds that we now have included. Our federal funds that are included in this year's revised budget include the coronavirus relief funds. You'll oftentimes hear us refer to those as CRF funds as well. These were dollars that were made available to us for expenditures that were incurred between July 1st and December 31st. So for those six months of time, we were able to access and utilize the funds of $2.7 million. So those are included in the current revised budget. We didn't know about them when we built the budget. So that is a reason, for example, to revise this budget. The S R one funds, there's three different categories that the state has broken those monies down into the 90% funds, the 9.5%, 9.5% funds, and the gear funds. And so you can see those dollar amounts here, those are also all included in the current revised budget. We included the revenues and we included in anticipation of spending those exact dollar amounts as well in expenditures. What is not included in this current revised budget for the current year is the S R two funds. We have heard that there may be more funds coming our direction to assist us in managing the additional costs that we're incurring due to the pandemic. These S R two funds are not included in this revised budget. As you go to the next slide, we're still continuing to talk about these funds, these federal funds. And this slide is intended just as a kind of a overview of all of them and the meanings of acronyms that you see and you hear us talk about. So this is more for your reference and we'll move on to the next slide where we talk a little bit more about what it is that the CARES, S R 90% and 9.5% and the gear in the center column, funds. And then they see our F funds. These were the dollar amounts awarded to ISD 191 on the first row of numbers. The next row talks about what are the effective dates in which we could utilize those funds? And so you see those all listed there as well. The third section talks about what's the purpose that we can utilize these funds for? So under the CARES S R and the CARES gear, those are from this, from the directives and guidance that we've received from M D E as to how we might spend those funds. We have not yet matched those expenditures up with our true expenditures to identify, like how are we going to code this? Are we going to utilize our, our gear funds to, to pay for these expenditures? Are we going to utilize the S R funds? Or how will we best utilize our funding mechanisms in order to best maximize the resources before us? So that's in the works and will be part of our process as we move forward. This revised budget has identified those dollars and included them in the budget. For the CRF funds, those dollars have all been attached to and identified as to exactly how we were going to use those funds. And those are the bullets that you see listed there. They explain how it is that we utilize the Corona relief, coronavirus relief funds. As we move to the next slide, we're going to continue to talk a little bit about that CARES S R funds. We did use a little bit of it in the previous fiscal year. And as a result, then we had this slide that we put together before. I'm bringing it back just to remind folks that we used a little bit last year. And because we had the CRF funds available to us from July through December, we did not use any more of the S R one funds, except for maybe just a few tiny expenditures that were kind of ongoing throughout the year and we want to be consistent about them. So essentially, we have utilized $339,000 last year. And now for the rest of this year, when we don't have the CRF funds available, we will then look to utilize the S R one funds to fulfill the commitments that we have for those additional costs and expenditures we're incurring due to the pandemic. The next slide talks about the CARES gear funds. These are more technology related. And so as you can see, we did not spend any of these funds in 2020, but we did spend and do plan to allocate that $285,665 fully in fiscal year 2021. Moving on, I want to talk just a little bit about the CARES funds that were awarded to us through Dakota County. Those dollars that we received, and you can see listed here on this, on the screen, they were utilized for our purchases of teacher laptops and they reimbursed us for those costs as they were necessary for the distance learning and hybrid learning that was being conducted by our teachers during this pandemic. Moving on to the CARES Scott County funds, we received these dollars in this current fiscal year. And those were allocated towards the childcare tier one reimbursement. That concludes our conversation around the federal funds that we have included in our current revised 2020, 2021 budget. As we move on to talk about our current reality, this is a format that is very common for us to use. It is intended to help us understand, okay, so where are we sitting financially? So as you take a look at this format, we always begin with the first line of numbers being our total beginning fund balance. And yet you'll see that there are different numbers across each of these opportunities. The rationale behind that is the actual results for an audit is going to be based upon audited numbers from the year before. But when you prepare your adopted budget, you have a new projected different beginning starting point. And so that number is then used because it's a moment in time and it's what's necessary and appropriate at that point in time. But as you take a look at the revised budget, now we've learned something. We've learned the actual results of the previous school year's audit. And so we're going to use the most recent and up-to-date information. So we're going to begin our column for the revised budget with the ending fund balance from that audit because it's more accurate and more current than the adopted information that we had. The next row of information is our revenues. And these are total revenues, inclusive of all different revenues you might have. Remember, this is just the general fund, it does not include the other funds. For expenditures, similarly, you'll see that also listed. And then we have what we call a variance or revenues less expenditures row. So if all you were thinking about is the revenues and the expenditures that you have in your current budget, that would tell you what your plan is. Are you spending down or is it that you're seeing an increase to the fund balance? So as you can see here from the actual results column, we had an unexpected increase to our fund balance of $4.9 million. The adopted budget was planning for this current year's budget to be spending down $990,645. However, as we revised the budget, we believe that number will only be around $536,494 if all budgets were to be received for revenue and all expenditure budgets were to be expended. As we take a look at the last or the middle row of this slide, it says total ending fund balance. So this is calculating what we are projecting for our ending revised budget 2020, 2021 of $19,789,533. But that's the total ending fund balance. So there are different types of fund balances that are identified under GAZB or Government Accounting Standards Board. And so those are listed below. And so we break down that fund balance into those categories. So let's talk a little bit about what those are. Your non-spendable, typically that's like your prepaid stuff, things that you, you have commitments to that you know at the end of the year, that money is already kind of spent. And so it's got to be set aside. Then you have the restricted fund balance. These are dollars that you received, but you didn't use for that purpose because you didn't need them at the time. And so you're going to hold on to them until you do need them and they're restricted only for that purpose. Our committed row are dollars that our school board has the option to select exactly what it is that we would be calculating and committing and setting aside. And so those are reflective of carryover funds as well as pro-pay for our district. That means the remaining amount of dollars available is the unassigned. And as you take a look at the very bottom of the slide, you see the unassigned fund balance percentage. This is calculated by taking the unassigned fund balance, which as you can see in the revised budget projected 2020, 2021 of $10,220,923. And you divide that by your total expenditures, which is the $134,280,355. When you do that calculation, it comes up with a 7.61%. Our board policy is 8% for an unassigned fund balance. So in approving this current revised budget, we would be asking the board to waive that particular policy. As we move on to the next slide, there are other resources that are available for the public and for our board to use. I will ask if we could just click on that first link. It is the revised budget, budget unit summary. So we break our budget down into various, what we call budget units. This will prepare for or show for those interested, the various different budget units. And they're numbered over on the far left with a description, a small description and a title in the gray area. Then you have four columns of numbers. The first column being what was it at the time of adopted budget? What is it looking like now under the revised budget? Is it up or down from that amount? And what are the current FTEs for this revised budget? Keep in mind that these are dollars that are identified at a snapshot in time. So when we did the adopted budget, it was like a picture being taken. And the same is true at the revised budget. Things can shift between different budget units, people can be reassigned, dollars can be shifted for better clarity. So oftentimes that's the explanation behind the changes. But that is available for your reference. We'll go back to the other screen now where the links are. The second link, we won't click on, but it is, it does provide the Staffing by Bargaining Group, which you had seen previously on an earlier slide. And it's just available as a resource in a link as well. As we go to the next slide, it's really now talking just about what's our next steps. So later on this evening is a recommendation for our school board to consider the approving the FY21 revised budget as it has been presented. And our final slide is a true thank you for the efforts of our team in our finance department to be able to prepare all the materials that are available to you on the revised current year budget. And I appreciate the opportunity to share this information with you.
Thank you, Ms. Ryder, and thank you also to your team, as you mentioned. I know a lot of heavy lifting goes into prepare this. Dr. Battle, do you have any further comments presenting or anything to present before we move to the discussion forum?
Part of our. Thank you, Chair, Miller, Directors of the Board. Just one note on the last hot link, the revised budget, budget unit summary. If you scroll down on that resource at the bottom, you will see a new category and it's the emergency relief funds. So you'll actually see that separated and I believe that's new, correct Lisa? From previous presentations or resources?
That is a very good thing to point out. Thank you, Dr. Battle.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time. Time they go to change formats, my screen was around. We will go to comments and questions from board members. I'm looking through, I'm not seeing anybody yet have their hand up. I'm assuming you guys have. Desire to speak? Okay, we'll start with Director Alt. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Yes, first wanted to thank Lisa and her team, knowing that we're a little short and this is a tough time of year for that to happen. So as Chair Miller indicated, this is a heavy lift and with lots of new information. Just two questions. One is more for our community to understand, of course, we have the tech level. our community to understand, of course, we have the tech levy, Lisa, that that helps pay for our technology. And I know that some of the CARES funding is restricted and it's specifically identified for technology. I must, if you could speak to the decision-making process in terms of where we were able to use CARES, where we had to use CARES funding for technology versus where we might have been able to use it for something else. Basically, we're, we're still trying to use the tech levy first, but where we're required to use the, the other CARES funding for technology, we did. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I think so. If I don't get quite the answer that, or if I don't quite answer your question, then please let me know. But as we, as we took a look at our expenditures as they were being incurred, our first thinking around where should this be funded from was, was the question being answered, was this necessary because of the pandemic? And if that was, if that was an answer of yes, then it went into the column of it's eligible for these expenditures. And that was the case across the board, whether it was technology or other areas as well. But with regard to technology, it's particularly true that it may very well be and is eligible under our technology levy. But if it was a purchase that was solely for the purposes of the pandemic, then it made sense for us to utilize these funds if we had those funds available to us. We already have a plan for our 10 years of this technology levy, and that is largely related to replacement of technology. And I'll be honest, there's been a little bit of an increase in the use of technology, right, in the last year? And so that is actually going to increase then our replacement costs also as we move forward.
Thank you. Yeah, that was, that was very helpful. And then
Director Alt, I just want to add one more thing, Directors of the Board, and I don't know if Rachel will need to correct me. But I, I, I think I would be remiss if that to not state that the pandemic illuminated several inequities and one that I was particularly I knew about, but I really, it didn't hit home was when our employees had to work remotely and we found out some of our employees lived in areas that didn't have broadband. And so hotspots were just really crucial. So I don't know if Rachel wanted to add more specifics. So I think people don't understand this increase in technology. It, all of us didn't have the resources, even within not our students, families and employees. And as many of you know, it is, uh, counties and cities are really looking at broadband because they saw that too. So I don't know if Rachel wanted to add anything.
Yeah, definitely. Hotspots and internet connectivity became front and center. And not just do you have it, but do you have it in order to support synchronous learning? Which is, has been a critical piece of our, of our model for the distance learning. The other, the other piece that really we were not planning for in the same way that we ended up rolling it out was for teachers to actually have a full laptop. So we have many desktops in our, in our district, but when they can't be in our buildings because of the pandemic, we had to quickly adjust. So that was another, another piece that we that, that came about because of the pandemic.
So Rachel, just a question that popped into mind. Do we expect long-term where teachers now have, you know, the hotspots and the, and the, and the laptops? Will those desktop computers go away and not be replaced except by another laptop?
Yeah, we had a, a pretty well thought out plan that we completed in February of last year. And so we are reworking that plan with our new environment and with the new demands on our technology systems. And so definitely we're looking at layering in that we won't be replacing certain equipment that we were kind of counting on before, but we've adjusted it. So that's a desktop to laptop model. Yep.
Awesome. Thank you. And then one last question for Lisa. Knowing that, you know, looking through the the staffing by budget unit information and seeing that there has been, you know, we talked about increasing FTE. And basically it's increased FTE because of the pandemic, we needed to staff to to the levels required by pandemic and social distancing. Also recognizing that we still have S R funds that we have not received. And this probably is an unfair question, but I'll ask it anyway. Do, are we tracking to be mostly on target with our budget? Or do you expect any, you know, deficit, again, not knowing what, where those S R two funds will land?
Yeah, given that we are going to begin in-person learning at our various grade levels in the next few weeks, right? We have quite a bit yet to be experiencing. We haven't done this in the pandemic yet. So we want to make sure that we aren't missing anything. But as I take a look at the revised budget and reviewed this at the line item level, I was noticing quite a bit of expenditures on the non-personnel side that were not necessarily showing spending rates being completed as a normal year might be. So we're kind of underspending in those areas, right, up till now? The question will be, as we move into this in-person learning, does that shift where there are certain resources that are necessary and needed? And that spending may dramatically increase. It, it'll be good to check it in a month, another month or two to see how that kind of progressed, because it takes a little bit of lag for us to make those payment of bills and everything. But I anticipated at least for the first half of the year that our non-personnel side of things is, is underspent. Okay, leaving us room for us to probably and possibly come in very much under the budget, right? So that's good news from my perspective. At the same time, we have to be cautious and just watch for that to see exactly what the in-person and hybrid models result in for the remainder of the year. We do know there are some types of expenditures that are going to be more. A good example is going to be our transportation cost from here forward, right? Because we have very limited numbers for our secondary activity routes. For example, if they take a bus with a team, there's only a certain number of students on that bus allowed. So those types of things are going to add to our costs. The question will be, how much does that compare to the underspending that we have for the first half of the year?
So basically, we're doing okay. We're, it's, it's tight. But we're cautiously, I mean, and that's basically where we are, that, that really this, this pandemic has been a challenge and we hope simply to land on an uneven ground.
Yes, yes. I, I mean, this, this, as you take a look at the totals, you see that it's nearly balanced. You know, I'm, I'm hopeful that we can come in balanced, if not better.
Great. Thank you very much.
All right, Director Chester, you had requested to ask some questions. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. So at the beginning of the presentation, Lisa, you mentioned that because of different requirements that student activities and something else rolled into the, the general fund. Remind me what the second thing was? And then is that reflected under the restricted dollars in, in there? Or is any of that in unassigned?
Yeah, good question. Okay, so the, the answer to your first question is the flexible spending plans. So this is a, an option our employees have had for many years. It just used to be in a separate fund all by itself that you used to see on a separate line item called trust and agency. Now it's rolled in both revenues and expenditures that are fairly equal. That's rolled into the general fund and it is not restricted as those funds that are collected and then not utilized by our employees are then forfeited. And so that is under the unassigned is where that will fall.
But then the student activities would be restricted?
They, student activities is restricted, yes.
And then another question. So under the, the CARES funds at the very bottom, there is a thing of like submitted, yet to submit. Does that mean that we were awarded the funds and we haven't submitted the reporting to be reimbursed? Or that we have yet to actually submit an application?
Right, that is correct. The, the coronavirus relief funds, the CRF funds that needed to be spent by December 30th, we have drawn down those funds. We have submitted all the reporting that's required. That's, that's done and tied up. However, the S R funds, we have until the end of the fiscal year to allocate those funds to the line item expenditures and, and appropriately record that budget in the served system.
Thank you. That's all my questions.
Excellent. Director Ward. Go right ahead.
Yes, Lisa, regarding the unassigned fund balance, just wondering, is there a way to project when that will be back at the expected threshold in the future?
Good question. So this will be part of the dialogue that we'll be having as we discuss and build our FY22 budget. You can take a look at the budget in different ways. You can look at a balanced budget, which is your revenues and your expenditures are fairly equal. Or you can take a look at what is the remaining unassigned fund balance that you have and what percent of the total fund balance or total expenditures is that? And that's where that calculation then comes into play. And so that's where the dialogue will take place as to the guidance of what it is that we would like to see done in preparing for the FY22 budget.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments on the presentation? All right, I just had a couple of things. First, a question. Ms. Ryder, the, you know, I know we have a lot of fluctuation going on with potential, especially federal resources pouring in. And, you know, you, you've indicated that well in this presentation. In general speaking terms, so I'm not asking you to nail down anything, but this stuff all typically has to get spent pretty, pretty much on spot, right? And, and applied immediately, or it's kind of a use it or lose it. None of the funding, I don't think we can expect any of the funding would be allowed to go, say, to the general fund for future purposes or anything like that, right? I know I'm asking you to predict what, what they're going to do with it, but that's typically the practice, right?
So typically, like on our other federal grants that we get on an annual basis, it's a situation where you're awarded a certain dollar amount and you have that to spend that year, and you might be able to carry over a certain percentage, but maybe not, not over another percentage, right? So for title, for example, you don't want to carry over more than 15%. Now, in this case with a pandemic federal funds, what we found happening is that S R one funds came out first. We heard about them first. And we learned that those were retroactive to March, mid-March, when everything changed for us. And that they would expand all the way out through September of 2022. So that, that was a unique circumstance, and we've seen it before in what was called the ERA funds a few years back. But it, they're actually allowing these funds to be utilized over multiple years. Okay? When we received notification of the coronavirus relief funds, those funds came at us very quickly with a very tight timeline and needed to be spent only within that timeframe. And if you did not spend them, you would lose those funds. And so that was a unique circumstance and we needed to address that immediately and take care of those expenditures first and foremost, which allowed us then to basically postpone the use of the other S R funds until after we got past December 30th. So the funds, I'm sorry, the funds that we still have now for S R one are available for the remainder of this year as well as into all the way through September of 22, should we need them.
Okay, yeah, but I think still, and that's good. I think the point I kind of want to make sure people hear is that a lot of times this stuff is great to patch, you know, bumps and problems we had and whatever. And by all means, any funding that is handed out is, is gladly received. But, you know, long-term thinking for this district and planning on, on, that needs to happen from the board level usually involves trimming back programming, which means trimming back FTEs and such. And, you know, we can't bank on a lot of this stuff that comes in short term to, to prop us up for long-term planning. So that's just, it's the unfortunate reality of it. And, and for anybody, for those listening, and especially for our new board members, this is the territory of board service and, and what we talk about is one of the most challenging to get your brain around. And so I'm, you know, I'm glad you guys have jumped into it. School district funding is very, very complex, far more complex than running a business, a private business or some sort of that nature. As you've noticed, there's a lot of different funds and a lot of different funding sources. I think some of the key takeaways that people need to focus on are, again, that gap between state aid and with the reality of what quite frankly, just inflation has been bringing about to us. Yes, we have a funding problem with the enrollment issues. But the primary driver here is that we're just never receiving enough money from the, you know, from the legislature to fund the activities we have. And I, I know the counterargument of that typically is, well, we need to be better with our spending. I will remind you that every year we recognize Ms. Ryder and her team for their outstanding product, service to this district in keeping this in quote, in terms tight books. And we also run an audit every year and it comes back that we are doing an excellent job in managing the books and managing our funds here. So we are always looking for ways to save money, but we do what we can. But i- if your sales are down and you're, and that's what funding really is for this organization, it's our revenue stream. If sales are down, your organization has to keep cutting back, and that's just the way it goes. And the other thing is, it was, was alluded, I think the other key takeaway to focus on is that that unassigned fund balance percentage, and we'll spoil it, or we'll be talking about that a little bit later. There's philosophy that goes behind that along with hard numbers, and we'll get into that later in our workshop tonight. But that, for most, you know, for most people to understand, that's just an indicator of, of the health of the organization. If we maintain a, you know, a large, a positive fund balance, that's our safety cushion and our safety net. All right. So with that, again, thank you for all the work that went into presenting and preparing this presentation for this evening. We will now move to the next piece of our, in our informational section of tonight's regular board meeting. And that is to receive an update about District 191's efforts to implement COVID-19-related educational and public health guidance issued by the M D E and the M D H respectively. And this will be presented by Dr. Battle. Dr. Battle, the microphone is yours.
Thank you, Chair Miller, Directors of the Board. Tonight's staff and I will share in, information related to COVID-19 case rate by county and updates regarding our learning model transition preparations for elementary and secondary. Updates on the new mitigation strategies, especially Minnesota's vaccine program, Project Kids, PALS and B Y C, as well as transportation. So first I begin with today's county confirmed cases that were, that was released this morning by Minnesota Department of Health. Please be reminded that these confirmed case rates are for a two-week period. And so these numbers represent January 3rd through January 16th. Dakota County has 45.00 confirmed cases for their 10, every 10,000 residents, and Scott County has 38.29 for every 10,000 residents. We must use the county with the higher number of confirmed cases, which is Dakota at 45. For middle and high school, according to the Minnesota Safe Learning Plan and learning model parameters, that still puts us in the distance learning model. My team and I have consulted about a possible shift in learning model for secondary. It's middle and high school students with our regional support team and with our 191 COVID-19 advisory group. I did ask the regional support team about an early or mid-February shift for hybrid for secondary students. They maintained their recommendation that we wait to see case, case numbers under 30. And they advised us to look at those numbers in our local data. Our advisory group recommended that we take it slow and make sure we bring back students, we bring students back when it is safe to do so. We bring students back when it is safe to do so. I plan to look at next Thursday's number for Dakota County in the hopes we will see another decrease in confirmed cases. And hopefully we can shift learning models for secondary the last week in February or the first week in March. We have requested another, another consultation with our regional support team to bring forward a plan for their support and guidance. As well, every week, the COVID, our 191 COVID advisory group meets every Friday. So I will also get their guidance and support before making a decision about a shift in learning model for secondary students. I want to say a few words about, maybe more than a few, about Minnesota's vaccine program that many of you know has been quite the story the last few days. So it was this Monday when Governor Walz announced that, excuse me, I may be getting my Mondays. It's been two Mondays of Governor Walz's announcements. So districts received information that we would receive a set amount of vaccines for pilot programs. So that was the Monday, the 18th. And partnering with local public health and school districts, the state launched nine pilot sites that serve pre-kindergarten through grade 12 educators, school staff, and childcare providers, beginning at some of the pilot sites. There are supply limitations and the staff did ask districts to prioritize which educators and staff would receive the first dose doses. So Minnesota Department of Health, MDE, as well as Dakota and Scott Counties gave us guidance. And they wanted us to maximize benefit and promote equity for the first round of vaccine doses. This was wonderful news. So it means more Minnesotans will have that additional mitigation strategy of a vaccine. However, we all need to make clear that the number of vaccines Minnesota has received is not enough to vaccinate all Minnesotans. There are educators, school staff, and childcare workers. So this past Monday, Governor Walz announced that the state would be testing a model for a new large-scale community vaccination site. And so beginning today, the state hosted a large-scale vaccination event at Excel Center in St. Paul for educators, school staff, and childcare workers only. The state has provided 15,000 vaccine doses for this event. They also announced that they will be opening two other vaccine sites to serve adults 65 years of age and older. And their process was through a lottery system. So there were changes to the way educators and school staff would sign up for appointments. All of the allotments for school staff and educators would be on a first come, first served basis. And no one was guaranteed an appointment. So we did receive word late today that, as you may know, there were more educators who registered than the allotment. And so they've been placed on a waitlist. We received news late today that they would be rolled over for when the next set of vaccines are available. Staff will receive more information soon about that. So we're very thankful that we now have many more Minnesotans vaccinated. And as more becomes available, we will follow the guidance from our counties as well as Minnesota Department of Health and MDE. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to my team and we have a presentation to share. You and I think we have Brian Gersich, who's up first or?
Great, thank you. Dr. Battle, good evening, Chair Miller, Board of Directors. Dr. Battle, thanks for the opportunity. We do just have a brief series of updates from our last board meeting related to our planning in COVID-19. Aaron, next slide, please. We'll just talk briefly. I will talk about the learning model transition preparations, a couple of updates for both our elementary and secondary. And then we'll get into some updates from mitigation efforts from Bernie Bean. And then some additional programming updates for Project Kids, PALS, as well as transportation. Next slide, please, Aaron. Our elementary is on track. As, as we likely know, we had transition days today and yesterday for our teachers of our PK2 who will be starting in-person learning on Monday. With the transition day still coming up for that, what the state has called the rolling start, where we can only start a few grade levels at a time. So we will have grades three through five starting their in-person learning February 15th, with the prior end, end of the prior week being the transition days for those. Thank you to Dave Lake, as well as our teachers and Bernie and Stephanie. We've got our classroom spaces have been set up and reviewed. And when I say reviewed for the health and safety requirements, that now students need to stay three feet apart as a part of that. And again, I don't want to glance over. I know that we have teachers that are transitioning into those classrooms that maybe had been previously learning, using other learning spaces. Special appreciation to them. We know how much consideration that our elementary teachers take in making those special learning places with the things on the wall, welcoming spaces. And I know that they've taken some time in consideration to do that. So certainly that shouldn't be glanced over. That took some time over the last couple of days and probably in the future. Again, special thanks to our teachers that are transitioning through this process. Scheduling is complete. I think it would be noteworthy for the board to know as well as the public that we did see some better class size balances this time through. I know when we went into the fall because of the way we were running our hybrid and the way we had to do some of our staffing. In particular, our virtual academy classes got to be fairly large, several in the, right around the mid, upper middle 30s as far as class sizes. We are seeing much better balance as we did have that net change in enrollment that Dr. Battle talked about last week of people shifting to the in-person. And so I believe we ended up with only a handful, maybe three classes that in the virtual academy that are over 30, with 31 and 32, two of those at the fifth grade level and one at the fourth grade level. So again, much, much more reasonable class size numbers that I think is, is something that we're all relieved about. And certainly something that we'll have to keep an eye on as family situations and circumstances change and people may need to shift back into the virtual academy. So it's, it's an ongoing thing that we need to monitor. From the secondary, I'll just be brief. Dr. Battle did already talk about this. The expectation right now that we're hearing from our regional support is that we continue to watch for those cases to go below 30 or 10,000 before we would be shifting our secondary into the hybrid learning. Certainly, as we talked last week, or I'm sorry, two weeks ago, last board meeting, a bit about our checklist and pre-flight checklist process. Our teams, secondary, that's middle school and high school, have been preparing for a little over a month for a potential for February 1st. We know now, obviously, that's not going to happen. And we optimistically said then February 15th, and we realized that that's probably too optimistic. And as Dr. Battle said, we're probably looking at late February, early March, which kind of starts to tie into where we will have a disrupting in, in instruction break with conferences coming up at the end of February anyway. So being able to capitalize on that to try to mitigate it would be nice. But as you said many times, COVID will determine that and we will continue to adjust. The team is ready. And COVID numbers give us the opportunity to welcome our students back into, to hybrid. I'm now going to welcome, Aaron, you can jump to the next slide and I'll welcome Bernie Bean, I believe, who will be talking about updates on mitigation.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Battle and Board of Directors. The screening tool for families, well, in, the first thing we need to do with creating a safe environment is be ensure that staff and students that are ill stay home. The screening tool is one of those resources for families and staff to, it's a checkoff list. It's been updated. Not any new information on it, but it just is a little bit more user-friendly. And so that has been posted on the website. The other document that we use regularly in the health office is the decision tree. And that's from the Minnesota Department of Health. And that's our guidance on what to do if somebody's not feeling well. But also it creates, it provides us with an algorithm if somebody has a close contact or somebody is actually experiencing COVID infection. So that is the, the resource that we go to. But it, it's also in multiple languages. We have it written up on the website. It is kind of confusing though. Even some of the seasoned nurses, there's always a little twist with that decision tree or a special situation. When I, we first started with COVID, it was one page. And now it's still one page, but there's seven pages of narrative that go with it. So it is complicated. And we encourage staff and families, reach out your health office because we can help you work through that decision tree and give you the best advice, the best education that you need to navigate COVID. So two exciting mitigation strategies with the new executive order for going back to in-person with our elementary schools is the saliva screening. We are doing the final prep steps to get that ready to roll out to staff starting next Monday. And it'll go every other Monday following, following that. It is a screening, meaning that its intention is to identify asymptomatic individuals with infection. A statistic I had just heard was that they estimate that over 50% of transmission occurs because somebody is asymptomatic. With that statistic, this is a really powerful mitigation strategy. It is being hosted in all of our elementary schools and at the Diamond Head Education Building. When secondary schools are registered as hybrid or in-person, whichever one happens first, they will roll out the same program. We do have established saliva screening teams in every building that will be ready to go when that time comes for them. Our vaccines, I can't tell you enough about the strong partnership with Scott County and Dakota County. They have not only been instrumental in rolling out vaccines to the tier 1A subgroup B group, subgroup three group, which is health. And health has a broad definition in the schools. And that includes our health offices. It includes our paraprofessionals that provide personal care health in a classroom. It includes our saliva screening team, but also our licensed health providers like PTOT and speech. Those two counties have been working really hard to get our staff immunized. The first vaccines rolled out to the health office nurses the first week in January. And nurses will be getting their second vaccination next week. The Minnesota pilot, as Dr. Battle said, that has gone to, those spots go to school in general. The counties are working on finishing up the school health categories. As of today, if we, we have approximately 1,500, 1,500 employees, 1,500 employees, yes, that in our contracted services. And as of today, over half of our employees have either had their first dose, have an appointment scheduled, or are on the waiting list. So over half of our employees. So we are really making some headway. But that is really thanks to the partnerships with our local counties and MDH. The other thing that the counties do for us as school nurses is they provide us with a lot of guidance. And they hear our concerns and they also provide us resources. For example, the need for thermometers for some of our families, they have provided us with those kind of resources. So the partner, you know, COVID has been challenging, but partnership with our local stakeholders are stronger than ever before. And that is something that will continue to go forward for us. Thank you.
I think we had Lisa Ryder next.
Yes, thank you. For, for the Project Kids, we wanted to make sure that everyone had the schedule out there as to how this is going to look. We began moving our Project Kids programming back into our elementary schools so that before and after school care will be available February 1st through the 12th for our pre-K through, I'm sorry, kindergarten through second graders at the school sites. While in the meantime, our third through fifth graders will continue at Marion W. Savage Elementary versus Sutrail Elementary for the childcare that may be necessary. And if a learning plan model has shifted for your family as to your needs, please reach out to community education as there are childcare opportunities available. Beginning February 15th, when our K through five students are all in the elementary buildings, those who are not virtual academy, this will mean then that our programming will take place at the elementary schools and no longer than at the Marion W. Savage or Sutrail Elementary schools. For our pals and our BYC, that programming has begun virtually, has been running since January 5th and continues through May 5th. And these hours are basically, the PALS program is after the school days. So they run from four to six and our BYC is running on Tuesdays and Wednesdays with times determined. So students, if you're interested in, in those signups for the PALS and the BYC for some extra connection, that is something to check into as well. That concludes the information for our Project Kids, PALS, and BYC. Next, I'll turn this over to Dave, who will speak about the transportation.
Good evening, Board Chair Miller, Board Members, and Dr. Battle. We've received strong feedback from our families regarding in-person and virtual learning. And as a result, we've been able to put together all of our bus routes. Those have been completed in this past week. They're all ready to go. As I shared in our last board meeting, our full-size buses, we've, we've chosen a capacity of 45 and 12 small buses. And I'm happy to report that after routes have been completed, we found that our average ridership is 27, which is a real win for our, for our students. We've got safer buses with lower numbers. We've utilized our entire bus fleet to do this. And, and we were happy to see that even though 45 is a safe number, we were happy to speed it much, much lower than that. Like I said before, our elementary routes have been completed. Postcards were sent out Monday morning to families. And Parent View was up to date as of yesterday morning. I want to stress that in all of our buses, we prioritize health and safety. Face masks are required for riders and, and drivers. Face shields will be worn by our bus aides. Ventilation, what we're doing on our buses, the large buses, we are requiring six windows to be open as well as the roof hatch. And then on our smaller buses, four windows and the roof hatch. And, and the, the goal there is to keep the air circulating in, in concordance with the MDH guidance. Cleaning and disinfecting will happen between all routes on all buses. And our principals and building staff have been working hard on putting together assigned seating. And, and many of those have been completed already. Attendance will be taken by our staff and, and we will audit those reports and use those for contract, contact tracing purposes. So we are set to go with our elementary schools. We've got three food service routes that will continue on. Right now, we're running about four to six activity routes for sports and other activities. And we are utilizing our full, our full fleet. Right now, we've got 45 buses of the large size and then 28 small. And then if you, if you factor in the food service routes, we are at our, our fall capacity, our fall fleet sizes. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you, team. And so in my closing comments, I have said this previously, that COVID is the enemy. So we are very honored to have some elders who were children in the 1918 influenza pandemic. But we have to work together to get through this. And so we have to be kind to each other, share virtuosity, share vulnerabilities. But from the governor on down, no, none of us have ever lived through a pandemic. And so I just really want to emphasize the amazing staff and our partnerships, a community, as well as the board. Because this has been one for the ages. And so I just leave you with those final comments. Thank you, Chair Miller and Directors.
Thank you, Dr. Battle, and thank you to everyone that presented. Very good. Thank you. Any board members that wish to add comment or? Any board members that wish to add comment or question? Okay, yes, Director Hume, go ahead.
I just have one question and Bernie touched on it a little bit, but I was curious. It's been a couple of months since we had our students physically in the buildings. And I was wondering, has anything changed around the notification and contact tracing processes and other protocols? In the event of a positive case in the classroom?
Thank you for that question. It, nothing has changed in the sense of the case tracing that we do when there's a positive situation. Among our staff or our students, the licensed school nurse reaches out to that individual. We, we do a detailed analysis of their contacts during the time that they might have been infectious in the building. And then at that time, we determine who by M D H's operational definition of close contact fits that category. And then we, we consult with M D H or our local public health. And then we provide that information to who might be a close contact and what next steps that we might have to do. So all of that is done with the guidance from M D H or our local public health. But the guidance, the guidelines that we do are still the same. And following up, you know, the other thing that's so important about the health, the nurses being involved in that is M D H gets really busy. And by the time that they get the lab positive confirmation. Several days could go by. And when we are informed of that early, we are able to give staff and families the needed educational pieces that they need to keep their family safe. And so giving that information to us just provides a better safety for everybody involved when we do that.
Thank you very much.
Director Alt, you had your hand raised.
Thank you, Chair Miller. I think this question probably is for you, Dr. Battle. In terms of the advisory, the COVID Advisory Committee and conversations around community infection rates. And I'm just wondering if there's been any discussion about whether it matters, whether, you know, if the community spread is localized in particularly, in particular parts of our community. Or are we simply looking at this across the board that Dakota County is, you know, at, at 45 and Scott is at 38.9?
So that Director Alton, our members of the board, that's where the local data comes in. And I'll have others on the advisory chime in. And so for example, part of Minnesota Department of Health, they do release the city data. They also release the data for long term care facilities and also higher education. So very early on in the fall, there was a case, Mankato had went above the recommendation for hybrid. And their local data traced it to, it was mostly the colleges in the area. So they were allowed to continue. So that's one example I would give. So we at the advisory, we do look at the local data points, one of which is the positivity rate. And so we look at anything 5% or above as being problematic. And so I think last week, Bernie, what was the positivity rate for Dakota? So we're hoping that'll go down too.
It was 6.6 last week and they anticipate it will be going down. And they also anticipate next week, we have been seeing that 14 day number kind of go up, down, up, down. Ever since our winter break, but they are actually predicting that it will show us a trend down. And that's the first time in a long time. So that's some really exciting, some excited news. And the local data also includes what we see happening in the schools. We keep track of who is out due to infection, who is out due to being in quarantine because they were a close contact or maybe a household member is ill. So we keep track of all of that internal data also, and that helps in the decision process. It's not a one, a one data point. There's many data points that are looked at to make that decision.
That's very helpful. Thank you, Bernie.
Director Swede, you had your hand. Sue, you had your hand raised?
Oh, I'm sorry. I did not hear you say my name. Okay, um, so when, if, not when, if the new variant comes to our county, does that change anything in our decision making and how we collect data? Knowing that the, any variant that does come through in our area is more contagious than what we really planned for.
I'm turning that over, Director Said, to our health expert here.
You know, that it's COVID is acting like a typical virus. Viruses mutate. That's a part of their characteristics, just like the flu virus mutates. And COVID is doing the same thing. And actually they just isolated the Brazil mutation in Minnesota. So what that will, what we do know from the data that they've collected so far is that it, it, the vaccine will be effective. That's good. We know that it is more easily transmissible. We also know that the effects of it are not any more impactful than traditional COVID. And, and so as far as when we find it more in our local area, I can only imagine that that will be a talking point. Because it is transmitted faster and so we need to be mindful of that. We haven't experienced it yet, so I'm not sure what that's going to look like. But it will have to be a piece of those discussions for sure.
All right, great. Thank you for taking my question.
You're welcome.
Any other additional questions, comments? All right, well, before we move on, on behalf of this board, I would like to strongly recognize and acknowledge the lift here and the effort that's being put in by our entire organization, starts with our teachers, with our administrators, with our transportation folks, with our custodians, everybody involved. This, I mean, when you go through something like this in a society, it's common, as long as we have, it's very common to reach a fatigue point. And, and we'll often hear, you know, offhanded comments like, well, just get the kids back in school. But the fact, simple fact of it is to do that, you have to rearrange your classrooms. You have to make decisions about what's going to impact your life as a, potentially on a, on a health issue. You have to ensure that the safety of everybody, you have to rearrange teaching environments and the, you have to deal with kids who are bouncing from one structured environment to another throughout the year. So there's a lot that goes into this and, and it's, it's no small thing that you guys have been able to continue to function and move forward with this. And so I, I again, very much appreciate this. Appreciate everything that everybody's doing and, and I know the work you're putting in and this board recognizes that, so thank you. All right, we are going to move now from the information section of our regular scheduled board meeting to the business meeting portion of our tonight, beginning with our consent agenda. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for separate consideration. So at this time, I will ask if there's any board member that is desiring to move something out of the consent agenda for individual discussion. Seeing none, I will now ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
And a second?
A second.
I'm sorry, who seconded it?
Anna.
There's too many pictures on the screen here. All right, so the, the motion for the consent agenda has been moved by Director Alt and seconded by Director Wurb. Ms. Kenny, will you please call the roll?
Connor.
Hi.
Heel.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Wurb.
Hi.
Alt.
Hi.
Said.
Hi.
Chester.
Hi.
Excellent. Motion to approve the consent agenda passes unanimously. Next, we will move into our new business, beginning with we have in front of us, a motion to approve the online school application. So first idea, a motion, or excuse me, presentation of this motion will be by Rachel Gordon, Director of Technology.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Miller, board members and Superintendent Battle. At the last board meeting, we had the opportunity to share with you our planning and vision for a permanent online school. At that time, we shared our goal to continue and to expand the unique and outstanding learning opportunities our district offers. Our vision includes alignment and commitment to ensure equitable learning that requires, that removes barriers for students and to utilize our excellent pathways as a framework. We also shared information about the Minnesota Department of Education's online learning provider application. The application itself is not a fully developed plan. The details will be developed in upcoming weeks and months as we move into our next phase of planning and preparation. The application does provide context and assurance to M D E that we are prepared to develop and implement a learning model where our students will thrive. I would like to point out that based on feedback from the last meeting, we adjusted the language in the application to include the potential for board participation in the 191 Virtual Academy Advisory Committee. Establishing the online school allows us to move into the design work that will bring us to a successful launch. We are excited to develop this school to spark wonder in our youngest learners, to fuel passion as our students explore middle school, and to provide opportunities for our high school students to blaze their own paths. Tonight, we are asking you to approve our application so that we may officially begin the process with M D E.
Excellent. I am looking for a motion, please, for the prove the recommendation that the Board of Education approved the application to M D E to establish I S D 191 as an online learning provider.
So moved.
And a second, please.
Second.
All right, moved by Director Hume, seconded by Director Chester. I will now open it up for discussion on the motion in front of us. That's Director Chester.
Yes, I've, I think I saw in some news about the influx of the many applications from districts to start one. What kind of want your thoughts about that? I don't necessarily have a formed question as much as like, you know, what, how is our academy going to stick out from like the several others? Does the state only approve so many? Kind of understanding more like our competition going in.
Yeah, it's a, it's definitely, we, we do know that there are a lot of applications that are, that are going into M D E. And the application, interestingly, was designed before the pandemic. When it was relatively a far reach to think about doing an online school. Many districts are preparing for possibilities for next year. And just like us, see the opportunity for some of our students to really have a different exposure and experience for their learning. One of the things that's been really exciting when we've been talking with M D E is that they are very excited about our pathways program and how that will set us apart for our online school.
Excellent. Director Alt.
Thank you. This is just really exciting. I really have no doubt that, as you said, Rachel, our pathways will distinguish us. I mean, we've already distinguished ourselves with the pathways being wall to wall. Every single student at the high school can access the pathways and pick and choose. And they have the choice whether to stay with the pathway or try a different one that they think might be a better fit. And I think that just lays really strong groundwork for us. Particularly as we continue to explore new pathways. The cybersecurity, I think, will, as you said in your presentation, will really lend itself to the virtual academy. And I'm just really excited to see where the team goes creatively, trying to, you know, figure out, you know, how do we take the excellence that lives within the, the walls of our high school and translate that into the virtual academy for students wherever they may live in, in Minnesota. So thank you.
Director Connor, you have your hand raised.
Yes, I'm also very excited about the pathways from your last presentation. Just wondering, do you have, um, have you experienced or been able to find out some information on what makes us, this program stand out as opposed to the other districts? Do you see any main things that stand out, set us apart?
Yeah, definitely, there's a lot of, I've, I've heard that there are a lot of applications going in that are really focused on STEM. And, and kind of that, that, that focus kind of in itself. I have not heard of any others that are coming at it from the pathway model. So I do really think that that is distinguishing us. And in our conversations again with M D E, right, they, they expressed excitement of seeing this because they're looking at the online provider kind of catalog per se across Minnesota and they want unique programming. And so they provided some really exciting feedback for us, that this is a great direction for us to be, you know, a solid foundation in our in-person schools and able to build on that for our online school.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Director Hume.
Yes, this might be a very simple question and it may have come up last week and I just forgot. But what is the approximate timeline on when we might expect to hear back from the state on whether or not it's approved?
So the official timeline is within 90 days. And verbally, we've talked, they've, they've said 30 to 90 days. And I asked them if they could make it closer to that 30 day option. So I
It will be helpful as we get into the budget discussions, yes.
Very much, yes, very much. And I think that with the, the number of applications that they're bringing in, I suspect that they're making some changes on how they're reviewing them because they're aware of the timelines.
Sure, thanks.
Director Wurb.
Hi, thanks. So I was at our leadership conference this morning and I was on a, a call where they were discussing legislature. And I thought they had mentioned something regarding bills or something that needed to be passed for virtual academies. And I was wondering if we foresee any type of barriers in preventing virtual academies from moving forward or, or anything that needs to be passed. Just any sort of red tape or anything that could prevent this from moving forward. Cause I'm, I'm not sure what that was about, but I just remembered hearing something. And I, I don't know if you might know more about that?
So I don't know exactly what, what they might have been referring to. But our application to M D E is following all of the statutes from Minnesota legislation that are already in place. So the, the requirements, when they review our application, they'll be looking to ensure that it is aligned to the legislative, the laws and policies that are out there. Yep.
Okay, great.
And Director Wurb, so our membership in association of metropolitan school districts as well as Minnesota School Boards Association, they'll share information about the various bills that will be introduced this legislative session. And so I'm not familiar with that one, but they do a good job at looking at that and our team as it's going forward. If it is passed, we And our team, as it's going forward, if it is passed, we will take a good look at if that bill impacts our virtual academy. So there'll be a lot of buy deals floating regarding education. And so we just need to see how the dust settles. And then, once we get that final in the middle of May, then we really start to unpack what does it mean for our programs.
Thank you.
Director Said?
Okay, so I, I think this was mentioned last meeting, and I apologize for asking again. So if, once this goes through, our students or our just kids in our district will always be priority and enrollment, correct? Before we can go outside that perimeter.
So it would be in alignment to the current practices that we have for, for things like variances and students from outside. So there would be similar, you know, as we go through the next phase of planning, those things will be kind of detailed out more in depth. But there would be alignment to our current practices, just as if a student wants to go from, you know, they, they're in the Ron area and they want to go to Gideon Pond or so forth.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any further questions or comments? Oh, yes, Director Alt?
Sorry to double dip, but Director Said's question just raised another comment for me. Just calling out Dr. Battle, if there's any policy that needs to be reviewed, specifically the variance policy Rachel, you had mentioned, then certainly, you know, making mental note, you know, taking notes on those changes that might need to happen sooner rather than later in policy and making sure those get to the Policy Review Committee.
Excellent. Thank you. Good round of questions and observations. Thank you. I'll just acknowledge Ms. Gordon, the work that's gone into this and everybody that's working with you on this. Thank you. So we have in front of us the, the motion to approve the application to MDE. Ms. Kenny, will you please read the roll?
Hugh?
Aye, aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wurbe?
Aye.
Alt?
Aye.
Said? Said?
Aye.
Chester?
Aye.
Connor?
Aye.
Very good. The motion passes unanimously. We will now move to the next item on our agenda, and that is to approve the 2021 Chromebook order. Presenting the motion and recommendation, Lisa Ryder, Executive Director of Business Services. Go ahead, Lisa.
Thank you. Typically, we're taking a look at our next-year purchases of technology equipment a little later than what we are seeing this year. However, we are already aware of current delivery delays with estimates at this time of five to six months out. So we want to try and get this moving forward. And our Director of Technology, Rachel Gordon, and her team have determined that the need is for us to purchase the Acer Spin 511. And this is the same model that's being currently used in multiple grades. It has a touchscreen and a stylus. These are replacement devices as part of our process for certain grade levels at the elementary and sixth grade and ninth grade, I believe. And so as a part of this process, we have the option of going out for bids ourselves, but we also have the alternative of utilizing a cooperative purchasing agreement, which is what this is doing. So the bid process has already been completed by the cooperative, and we are just basically what some people term piggybacking on that agreement and utilizing that opportunity for the pricing that is at a lower rate for the various things that we need, in this case, these Chromebooks. So what you see here before you is a, a purchase of 2,600 Chromebooks along with a white glove setup. And the total amount that we're talking about for this purchase will be around $803,400. So the recommendation, if I may, that the Board of Education approves the contract for Chromebook purchase and related service to CDWG in the amount of $803,400.
All right, so we have a motion in front of us. May I have? Moving forward, please.
I move.
And a second.
Second.
There you go. Moved by Director Chester, seconded by Director Alt. I will open it up for conversation. Director Hume?
Hi, could you just remind us what happens to the, I'm guessing, approximately 2,600 Chromebooks that are being retired?
Yeah, most, many of them will be recycled. There, sometimes we can resell them. There are limitations of what we, how we dispose. There's both legal and policy around how we dispose of obsolete equipment. Many of the Chromebooks that will, these will replace, were on their last legs last spring, and we pulled them into service to get us through the, the pandemic. So most of them will be recycled. Some of them will use for parts for any of the, the same model. And then, if there is any worth to them, that we can resell them in a manner that is legal and follows our policies, we will try to do so.
Thanks.
Director Alt?
Thank you. I really appreciate the team being proactive, recognizing getting this, this in sooner rather than later. It makes a difference. I remember a similar situation last spring where we just happened to have our order in early enough to be able to get, you know, I, I believe what was probably the last round of, of devices before supply disappeared. So, you know, this is, I, I just really appreciate you bringing this forward now and giving yourselves the time, more importantly, the time and the bandwidth with any luck this summer to be able to get them up and running in time for school.
Any further questions or comments? All right, so we have in front of us a motion that we approve the contract for the Chromebook purchase and related services to CDWG in the amount of 803,400. Ms. Kenny, will you please read the roll?
Miller?
Aye.
Wurbe?
Aye.
Alt?
Aye.
Said?
Aye.
Chester?
Aye.
Connor?
Aye.
Hugh?
Aye.
Excellent, and the, the motion passes. We'll now move to the next item, and that is approval of the fiscal year 2021 revised budget. Presenta, recommendation will be presented by Lisa Ryder, Executive Director of Business Services. Go ahead, Lisa.
Thank you. As we discussed and you heard earlier tonight in a very detailed report, this action item is to approve the revised FY21 budget. Within the recommendation, you'll find that there are, there is discussion of the key assumptions. For the general fund, this is a planned decrease of the fund balance by $536,494 with a projection of a 7.61% unassigned fund balance. For food service fund, it is projected to have about a $90,000 more revenue than expenditures. A community services fund is projecting a growth in the fund balance of about $250,000. However, I would like to note that for both the food service and the community education, we anticipate an update may be needed in the spring to capture the real impact of the changing learning models throughout the year. Each time we have changed a learning model, it has meant a significant shift in how we deliver or what we're delivering for our students. And with that goes the revenue and the costs that are tied to that particular learning model time period. So there is quite a bit of information we want to gain yet to ensure that as we wrap up the year, our budget is reflective of where we would probably end up landing. So that's something to consider for the future. Also attached to the board agenda are the two resources that were discussed earlier in the evening, the Budget Unit Report and the Staffing by Bargaining Group. With that, if I may, I'll read the recommendation that the Board of Education approves the 2020-2021 revised budget, providing revenues and expenditures in all funds as follows, waiving the 8% unassigned fund balance.
Thank you. Ms. Ryder, may I have a motion to approve the recommendation in front of us?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Director Hume and seconded by Director Wurbe. I will open it up for comments or discussion. All right, seeing none, I will ask Ms. Kenny to please call the roll.
Wurbe?
Aye.
Alt?
Aye.
Said?
Aye.
Chester?
Aye.
Connor?
Aye.
Hugh?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
And the motion that the Board approves the 2020-2020-21 revised budget passes unanimously. At this point, that brings us to the conclusion of the regular meeting's new business section and the end of our regular meeting tonight. I will now call us in adjournment, and we will be adjourning to a workshop. It is, by my computer's clock, 8:11. Let's return here. So let's call it 8:25, about over 10 minutes or so. Take a little break and we'll be back. The stream will continue, and we'll just pick up the meeting after one. Thank you.
Say Captain Stinger, are you there?
I am.
Yes, good evening. On my agenda, it says you are BHS Captain Don Stinger. What for the life of me, I haven't started trying to figure out what BHS stands for.
That must be a typo. I'm guessing it's supposed to be BPD.
Well, that's what I would have guessed. That's a very well. Good. I would have just guessed that, but I didn't want to be.
Not a problem.
No worries. Okay, my clock reads eight twenty-five. We're going to begin the evening, our workshop component of tonight with beginning by welcoming you folks. We are first item is we're going to discuss the school district ISD one ninety-one and Burnsville Police Department's collaboration. And speaking on this matter tonight will be Brian Gersich, Assistant Superintendent, Dave Helkey, Principal Burnsville, Principal of Burnsville High School, Chris Belmont, Principal of Student Support and Family Engagement, Burnsville Police Department Captain Don Stinger and Burnsville Police Department Officer Javier Jimenez. Welcome all. Brian, I am guessing you're going to take us out of the gate here.
I will. Thank you Chair Miller, Board of Directors and Superintendent Battle again. I will just kind of start talking and Erin, if you go ahead and pull that presentation up. We appreciate the opportunity this evening to bring the team forward and have them talk a little bit about our school resource officer partnership. Erin, if you can go to that next slide. In just a minute, I will turn it over here to Dave Helkey, who is the principal of Burnsville High School to introduce the team as well as walk us through. What we're going to see tonight is a little bit of a past, present and future of our partnership with the Burnsville Police Department and the team will walk us through some of the history of the resource officer in the schools for Burnsville Public Schools. A little bit about the current realities of what's been going on that's unique to the COVID nineteen pandemic. And then Dr. Battle and the team has been working on getting some input from various perspectives in our community about that program. And then I'll come back towards the end and talk a little bit about our upcoming contract as we are at a point where we need to be looking at renewal or next steps and I'll talk through what we're doing in that process. So welcome, Principal Helkey. I will turn to you at this point. And Mr. Helkey, you are on mute.
There we go. Take two. Good evening Chair Miller, Board of Education members and Dr. Battle. Thank you for providing us the opportunity this evening to share some information about the partnership that we have between Burnsville High School and the Burnsville Police Department regarding the School Resource Officer Program, often abbreviated as the SROs. Tonight, I will be presenting along with, as Brian had indicated, Principal Belmont and then Captain Stinger and Officer Javier Jimenez from the Burnsville Police Department. Principal Belmont will share a bit of information in just a minute about the history and the evolution of the partnership. And then Captain Stinger and Officer Jimenez will speak to the services and the things that the SROs do and support us in here at the high school. And then I will touch on some of the themes through feedback sessions that we had with students, parents and staff members. So without, without any more introductions, I'm going to turn it over to Principal Belmont to share a little bit about the history of the SRO program.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us. Little journey back into history that and we weren't able to always find the most like there's not a ton of history, right? But we were able to kind of piece some history together of our school resource officers. And the first one appeared in the late nineteen eighties at Burnsville High School. And the best we can gather is that was pretty revolutionary or new to most major public high schools in the Minnesota metropolitan area. You know, I grew up same age as Jacob Wetterling, so I do wonder if if that, I do recall being young at that time and a lot of fears were raised after Jacob Wetterling's abduction. And so then it became a more formalized partnership in nineteen ninety-two with a formal agreement, still having one officer and then at the end of the nineteen nineties, early two thousands, another second officer was added from the Burnsville Police Department stationed at the high school. Possibly in light of the school shootings, starting with Columbine High School in Colorado. We also wanted to share with the board and Dr. Battle response and interaction trend data. So this one, this one to code for all of the interactions our officers have with students, families, there's tons of informal relationship building and things that occur. This would be more of some formal tracking and and responses that occurred from incidents. I would say for the most part, the precipice for police officers in schools did have to do with crisis response and safety prevention. And we could go to the next slide because it can detail well. Just like my hair and clothing styles from the eighties and the nineties, there has been evolution in the school resource officer partnership at Burnsville High School. It's gone to much more of a proactive relationship, community support role. We still lean on our officers K twelve. They're stationed specifically at the high school. We leaned on our partnership with the officers K twelve for strategic planning, for guidance on crisis prevention and response. And then also the role has evolved into proactive community engagement, problem solving for students and families, helping connect them to resources in the community and in school, and then also instruction support. So I know Mr. Helkey and others will get into a little bit more about what that looks like at present and and then just also to share some of our visions at Burnsville High School, Mr. Helkey's vision that we honor, engage and support our students and that under the direction of the board and Dr. Battle, that we engage in anti-racism and and our strategic roadmap. And we certainly want to make our school resource officer partnership aligned to our vision and mission as a school and a district.
All right. Thank you for having us again. My name's Captain Don Stinger with Burnsville Police. I'll just talk a little bit about what we've been doing during COVID nineteen. Obviously, it's been a strange year for all of us, including our SROs. But the services provided, again, the critical, valuable work supporting our school community. During COVID, Officer Jimenez, who's up there now, has been, you know, a big part of coordinating with staff to provide safe, non-threatening learning environment for our students, both in the hybrid model as well as the distance model. He's assisted school staff with students in crisis. Unfortunately, as we probably are aware, COVID has only kind of heightened those and made those even more prevalent with crisis and mental health issues. And Officer Jimenez has been able to assist with that. Assisting school staff with connecting students and families to community resources. Javier is able to tap into numerous resources at the school, but he also has a lot of resources at Dakota County that he's in connection with that can help with that. And also supporting families experiencing runaway domestic conflict, alcohol and drug abuse. Again, especially Javier, he's done a great job of building rapport with students and providing advice to families dealing with these specific issues. I'm going to turn it over to Officer Jimenez for the next slide.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for having us here. We appreciate you guys hearing us out. Obviously, as a school resource officer, you know, the safety and the the development of the students is very important to me. But with that has to come some type of communication between me and the students and staff members and stuff like that. So through that, I try to support students and the families by resolving conflicts both at school and in the community. I truly believe that if a conflict starts at school, it's probably going to leak into the, into the family setting and vice versa. So I do whatever thing, anything I can in my power to be able to go do family visits and talk to students at school and at home. And I try to make it an effort because it's, it really is about the community coming together and to support the students and their families. I do try to connect and build relationships with the students and their family members. I have an open door policy in my office at the school that anybody can come in, whether it's a staff member, student, family or somebody off the street, if they need some help, I'd be more than happy to help them out. And I do try to build those relationships as best as I can, whether it's by going into classrooms and speaking with them, helping teach some of the medical classes and the CPR course, presentations, whatever thing I can do to kind of show them that I do care. I always try to be a point of contact for the students and families reaching out and wanting to talk to police. Everybody assumes that because I'm just at the school, that someone can't come talk to me. Especially in the Hispanic community, it's very difficult for people to make contact or speak with school staff or get some of those resources. I don't mind being the middle man since I fluent in Spanish and I'm able to speak a little Hispanic families. And sometimes it takes somebody that they can connect with and understand the culture for them to be able to speak with. And I want to be that person too. I do do a lot of, besides being a school resource officer, I'm still a police officer on the road and I'm still a police officer everywhere I'm at. So I do follow up with investigations of reports and criminal activity, whether it's in the school or outside of the school. I do try to inform the school staff and administration of anything that happens outside of the school that's criminal and matter. So that this way they're aware of what's happening outside of the school and we can provide those resources for those students and families. Most of the time, I do everything in my power to make sure they don't get arrested, don't have a criminal record. And there's a lot of programs through Dakota County that I always refer the students to, to keep them from getting something, you know, blotch on their record or anything like that. I believe it starts with giving them a chance. This will go to the next slide.
Yes, thank you, Erin. As part of this process, we really took the time and were really purposeful about collecting input from a variety of stakeholder groups, including students and parents and staff. And before I address the slide, just a big thank you goes out to several people. Milka May for assisting with one of the student groups. Aaron Tinkelberg, who facilitated several of the parent and the staff group. Principal Belmont for really helping to make arrangements to bring the parents together and then many members of our cultural liaison team for assisting with interpreting and translating during the sessions. And so a lot of the feedback that was gathered was through conversations. That's, you know, one way to get very authentic and genuine feedback as opposed to surveys that are sent out. And those conversations, as I indicated, did occur with student, staff and parent groups. And what's on the slide really is the themes that came out of all three of those groups. And one theme that was, was prevalent was that most support maintaining the partnership. Within that support, you know, some themes of concerns were just about, you know, not, not, not letting bias interfere with the work. Some concerns about criminalizing behavior and creating a record for students. There was a couple of key questions that were asked as the feedback was being gathered. One was, what do you feel the role of school resource officers are? And another one, or the other two questions really got it characteristics that you would like to see in resource officers. And again, the responses were quite similar across all the groups in terms of the role. Very, very heavy on the relationships, the connections, supporting students and then as well providing the protection and ensuring safety. And for characteristics, much aligned with those roles. They really were looking for someone who cares about youth, can relate to youth, the culturally proficient, you know, approach and mindset and someone who's really trained to de-escalate. And so as Mr. Belmont had alluded to at the beginning of the presentation, really that moved to much more proactive, supportive roles within our schools. And then in the corner of the slide, there are links to a couple of jam boards. We did want to give more students that were able to join the conversation an opportunity. And so we used a jam board, which is another easy and a quick way to allow students to provide feedback and post it. And so those links, when you look at those, you'll see a lot of the themes that are addressed on this slide and that I just shared in those responses as well. I don't know if any other members of the team wanted to speak to any of the stakeholder input. I know that I don't know if any other members of the team wanted to speak to any of the stakeholder input. I know that Dr. Battle, you were also involved in those.
Thanks, Principal Helkey. I would just add, one of the other questions we did ask our parents and our students, please share any experiences you have with the officers? And just to elaborate on Officer Jimenez' statement about that he is a police officer, he's assigned to Burnsville High School, but he actually serves the community. A couple of parents shared that they actually were able to call him at night when there was a situation with their child. And so I do want to share that they see him as not just being at Burnsville High School, but because of that close connection, they shared they know, and I believe you, do you share your cellphone with them? I'm not sure. Called you, but they said they called, we need help.
Well, I do share my work cellphone number to certain families. The ones that I know need the most support, especially those in the Hispanic community. Most of the time I give them my general office number and they can leave me a voicemail. And usually I tend to respond pretty quick within the five, 10 minute time range. But I do provide my work cellphone number for those who are really struggling and need immediate support.
Any other experience that students shared is they they understand the role of counselors and social workers and they do utilize those resources, but sometimes it, they need a police officer to talk to. It may be something out in the community. And so they did share that, that they needed that kind of a very differentiated support. So that's what I would add. Thank you, Principal Helkey.
And then next slide, Aaron.
Thank you. And so what you see here is just kind of a backwards map. What you'll notice there is we're talking about that next contract. And I think what you're hearing from the team tonight and from a lot of what the work that's gone on is a value for the partnership that's been a longstanding relationship between Burnsville Schools and the Police Department. And so with this kind of being the end of a contract cycle, we have been talking about bringing forward to the board in March, a new contract. We've also been working with the Burnsville Police Department and special thanks to Captain Stanger, who's been working with with me more recently on this one. Has been working to update some of our language and it's beyond just some of the financial considerations. But we're really looking to expand on the language that describes the mission and the goals for this partnership. Thanks to Dr. Battle, who's worked with her network of superintendents. As everyone knows, she she has that extensive network where we got a really good sample that we felt good about. The nice part is, and again, in working with Captain Stanger, working with our partners at the Police Department, we have a common vision for what we're trying to do here. And you've seen a lot of that all the way through it. We don't have to go through and rehash that. And obviously, Officer Jimenez has had an opportunity to describe exactly what we're looking for in this partnership, which is a resource for our families. And so again, the slide does say Burnsville Police Department drafting changes, you know, thanks to Captain Stanger. He did since I had an opportunity to prepare and we prepared this show, he has gotten that. So that's actually in my queue now to review some of those changes and draft those and get those back and forth. And once we have some of the language things figured out, certainly Director Ryder and I will work together and she'll come in and we'll talk through some of the financial pieces of that contract as well. So we can bring that forward to the Police Department. I just want to also just make a special note, it's been great to work with Captain Stanger. And I also see Chief Schwartz has joined us this evening as well. Certainly prior to her promotion, we were also working with with Chief Schwartz quite a bit, too. And so again, some longstanding relationships that exist, some some great support for from the Burnsville Police Department. And I believe that is our last slide at this time. And certainly I'll turn it back to you, Chair Miller, for direction on next steps.
Well, thank you. Thank you to everyone that is taking time out of their evening to join us. Both staff members of Burnsville here and the police members of the Police Department. I'm going to open it up for questions and comments from our board members at this point. I see that Director Werbe has her hand up. Go ahead.
Well, first of all, I'd like to commend the Burnsville High School staff and Burnsville Police Officers for the the work that's done on this program. I think it's important to our students in our community to build positive relationships within our schools and and beyond as far as, you know, positive images of police officers and that, you know, they're doing a service in our community. And I think that's, that's great work. This morning I was in a workshop as part of our leadership conference. And the topic was centered around racial and hate incidents and handling of those kinds of incidents within a school district. And I found it ironic that one of the questions that was asked by someone was, do, and I can't repeat it verbatim, what the question, how the question was worded, but it was to the effect of having, is having resource officers on site, does that promote in any way racial tensions? And for the people conducting this, this workshop, the answer was yes. Now, I'm sure, as you know, with everything that's happened in the last year with George Floyd and in other situations, it makes it that much harder as a police officer to be a positive image. And I just wonder with the work that you're doing, what kinds of things are you training, working on to create positivity with students of color? And just making sure that, you know, they understand that, you know, they don't have to fear the police and that there can be positive relationships made. And that's my question.
And it's a great, and it is a great question. As you can see, I'm a person of color as well. And the biggest thing that I do is I try to relate to the whichever individual I'm speaking with. I, the SRO, I could truly say saved my life when I was in high school. He was a, he was a, you know, he was a white school resource officer, but he understood what it was like being, he was in the Los Angeles area of California. And he saved my life. I was in a bad, bad way. And he just kind of implemented these ways of just little bit at a time, little bit at a time, get to know me, get to know my family. Eventually, he became one of my mentors and eventually I joined the Marine Corps and now a police officer. And I made it my goal to become a school resource officer at some point. But I understand that there's this, could possibly be viewed as tension there. I think the biggest thing is we have to be able to establish these relationships with people of all ethnicities, religions, races, creeds, genders, whatever it is. You have to build a strong relationship with them. And then from there you just build, build on being able to just be a confidant to them or a mentor, teacher, role model, or whatever it is. I can honestly say it's not for everybody, but I think because I have life experience in living in the ghetto, my house got shot up like three times growing up. So I have an idea of what it's like to live in an area like that. My, my parents were immigrants. I speak with a Hispanic community and past gang members and I think it's just, it's a matter of understanding the culture of each individual, not necessarily a group of people, but each individual has their own culture in their family. And you just have to take the time to be able to understand that. We do do trainings through the Burnsville Police Department, whether it's online or in person, about not being biased. I myself, I'm a use of force instructor for the Burnsville Police Department. And we do a lot of de-escalation training, quite a bit. I myself, I'm a forensic interviewer, which means I went to a special school to speak with juveniles to be able to relate with them and be able to to give them an opportunity to express themselves. So we do do training and it's throughout the whole year. I think it's just a matter of trying to find the right person for that position at the school resource officer who can connect with that culture.
That's great. Everything you said just is, you know, exactly what I was looking for. So, thank you.
Director Chester.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation tonight and answering our questions. Kind of building a little bit off of what Director Werbe was asking. It's wonderful that we have you, Officer Jimenez, in our, in our school building. But what, how are we guaranteeing that there's others, other officers like you that possess that same passion for being a resource to families and are that trained in in de-escalation? So like, if for any reason you move to another place and we have a new officer, you know, that, that there's some, that there isn't that break in that. And then secondarily, do we have other resource officers and do we have resource officers in all our schools? Because I noticed we're talking specifically about Burnsville High School. And then because this is Burnsville High School, we also have Eagan and Savage residents. So like, people might call you, but you're in Burnsville for those of us that are on the other, other ends. What kind of relationships do we, does, do you have with the law enforcement units in the other two cities that we serve?
Well, what else to selecting the next person to come in? We actually rely a lot on the school staff and administration. We make them a part of our panel when it comes to the interviewing process. Of course, I'm going to be on that panel as well whenever we get the next one because I'm, I want them to build off what I am trying to, or what I've already established with a lot of the families and students. But most likely, we're going to have staff members from this, from IC D-181, hopefully be there, whether it's a social worker, Mr. Belmont, Mr. Helkey, some of the deans, whoever it is, to be a part of that process. So this way they can't, so this way they can see and for themselves who would be a right fit for, for that role. I can't promise that it's going to be a perfect match, but there's always has to be some type of learning curve because it's, it is a new type of environment for a police officer. And when it comes to other like people from other like cities, Savage and Eagan, whatever it is, Apple Valley, whatever it is where they're coming from, they can still talk to me. I give them the opportunity and I, I've gone to home visits in Eagan, in Apple Valley, in Lakeville, Savage, because I want to make sure that they're taken care of, not just at our school, but in their communities as well. I've built a good relationship with school resource officers and not just the, in this county, but also in Hennepin, St. Paul. I've talked to a couple of them from South Dakota. It's just to gather good ideas of what we can do to establish these better relationships. So I do have connections throughout the county when it comes to our Dakota County residents. And I, and I talk extensively with them. We have meetings on a regular basis. All we did, at least before this COVID. But we would all get together and have meetings about what's working, what's not working. New ways to talk to students, families. So we do have kind of like their own little network. And we actually use, you know, we talk to each other so, so much that I've tried to implement some of the things that I've learned from Eagan police officers in our school and they seem to be working, at least for me.
And Director Chester, if I can just add to that, as far as, you know, you mentioned asked about where we have them right now. We normally have two officers at the high school. That's the only place we have them. And then just to touch a little more on what Javier said about our selection process, again, we're, we actively involve the school district in that. We want the, the right member there as much as our school district does and our students do. So we certainly looked to provide the right member for that setting. I will say in the community sessions to listen, to go to those listening sessions, one of the things that really struck me, a number of people that said 10 years ago, 15 years ago, I've never had an issue with one of our school resource officers in Burnsville. There are multiple stories about people singing Javier's praises, but also seeing our previous SROs and how helpful they were to different families. And they had experiences, specific experiences with our SROs. So we take a lot of pride in getting the right people up there. And there also is a benefit to Javier will rotate, rotate out of there at some point, but he carries with those relationships with him. So now when he goes out in the community on patrol, he knows people that he met over the last three to five years that he can connect with and continue to be connected with those families. So there's a benefit to rotating people through and we make sure and get the best ones up there.
Slime, sorry about that. I just wanted to add that. I understand there's no school resource officers at Nickelwood Middle School or any of the other elementary schools. But that doesn't mean they can't come to me. I, on a regular basis, I go to other schools, too, and try to talk to staff members and families and students. So it's not, even though I am assigned to this, to the high school, I still do everything I can to help out the students at the elementary schools and the middle schools that we, that we have in our district here. So I've kind of forced myself to expand to that area so that this way all of IC D-191 is taken care of, not just the high school.
Captain Stinger, do you want to mention Blue in the School?
Yeah, I can. So we have a program called Blue in the School, which is for all of our elementary schools and certain officers, depending on where they regularly patrol, are assigned to a school and they'll go in there and make regular contact. So every school will have two or three officers that are, that is their school and they'll make regular contact with those. They'll drop into the office, they'll go meet with kids, they'll read books for kids, whatnot. Of course, this was all pre-COVID, but plan to get back to that. That's a program we've had in place for a number of years now and will continue.
Excellent. Director Connor.
Kudos to Burnsville Police Department for this program. And also the other one you have Citizens Academy, which I attended in the summer. I just think this is a, this is a wonderful community outreach. So just thank you for that, Captain Stinger and Helgy and, or was it Captain Helgy? Well, anyway, all of you and for your passion, Dr. Jimenez, for really showing care and concern for these, for these kids, because they do need that. This is so important in this time and in this climate. So thank you so much for that. Just wondering, how often are you in the schools? I mean, is it like weekly? Is it a couple of times a month? I'm just curious.
Well, pre-COVID, I'm assigned to the school. I'm in the school every single day. Before school starts and until a little after school is let out. But I am there Monday through Friday, sometimes on the weekends, if there's sports activities or something like that. I attend all the football games or the home football games or any other games that the staff members want me to be a part of. That's including extracurricular activities like a couple of speech tournaments. I, I volunteered my time to judge some of the speech competitions. I, we go to the school dances. Not, not, I mean, I try to go talk to a couple of student unions and some of the Hispanic clubs there at the, at the school, too. I volunteer with the robotics club when I, whenever I can. I bring over our SWAT robots so they can take a look at it. So a lot of the, it's not just about being there Monday through Friday. It's, it really is about trying to be there after the, after school as well for other activities. But Monday through Friday, usually I'm there.
Okay, awesome. And then my last question is, um, do you try to recruit students, I mean, in a lightweight, not like the army or anything, students to join your program after high school or?
So we, we don't try to recruit. What we do is if any students express any interest in, in law enforcement down the road, I do like tell them on the process that I went through to become a police officer, but also different programs that there is. We actually currently, right now, we have two community service officers. They're pretty much, I guess you can look at it as cadets to be police officers that graduated high school last year. And, and they're doing a great job. And it was something that we were trying to recruit them. We just expressed, they expressed interest in law enforcement and we helped them make the right decision for themselves and not for us. We're very fortunate to have them. So as a recruiting, we don't recruit. We just guide them in the direction they want to go and then support them in a way we can.
Awesome. Thank you.
Director Alt.
Thank you, Chair Miller. I just want to send a big thank you to Chief Schwartz. It's not often that we have the honor of sitting in together on a, in a school meeting together. And, and I do appreciate you taking time to be here with us as well as the rest of the team and the partnership. And, and I do appreciate you, uh, taking time to be here with us, um, as well as the rest of the team and the partnership. So a couple of comments and a couple of questions. Um, I guess I'll start with the questions. Um, in terms of, you know, we obviously you'll be, you know, working together, um, to come up with a new contract. And, uh, I know you had mentioned, uh, Captain Stanger, that, uh, the police department involves, leverages the, the knowledge and expertise of one ninety-one staff. Um, has there been discussion about including a student in that selection process?
I believe that has been discussed. And again, if, uh, we would certainly rely on, uh, one ninety-one staff. If they thought that was a good idea, we, I would have no reason not to support that. Absolutely.
Awesome. Um, and I think oh, the other, the other one is, um, as you're, um, talking about this, I'm curious about a set, you know, how do you identify professional development? Um, I understand that there's professional development that, um, your officers receive through the city. Um, is there, for instance, I imagine that the officers go through our cultural proficiency, um, culturally proficient schools, training, um, and then how do we evaluate the success of the SRO?
Ryan, you want to talk about our discussion about the equity training?
Actually, I'm not quite sure what you're referring to on that one, but we have talked before about developing measures of success. We haven't actually drafted anything at this point. Um, to your question about the contract language and the student, in the contractor, in the draft language, there is uh, referral and references to having, uh, administration and staff as a part of the selection process. Uh, as, as Captain Singer did say, we have talked about having students as a part of that. And that was actually a contribution that, uh, Dr. Battle had added to one of our meetings along the way too. Um, I'm not sure specifically what you're referring to about the equity training. I do know that one of the other pieces of the contract is that there is specific SRO training in the state of Minnesota that the officers in our schools are required to attend. Uh, I'm not sure if, if Officer Jimenez has re- attended that recently, or if that's been a while, it may have changed over that time.
So that our initial meeting pre-COVID, because I think it was pre-COVID because we met in person. And, uh, Chief Schwartz shared about the training that they do have about, uh, that you referenced. But we did make a request, would they be willing to participate in our culturally proficient school systems? And refresh my memory, Chief Schwartz, it was yes.
Yes, absolutely. We're willing to participate in any of that. And Javier has been awesome about it. On, and our other SROs as well. So definitely if there's some way for us to, you know, build even stronger bridges and have those relationships, we're, we're definitely ready to do that. So.
And I also think it's fair, um, I also think it's fair just to call out that, you know, we have, the partnership is with, you know, obviously the SRO in, in the high school. And I really appreciate that, you know, we're looking for the right person with the right background and experience to be in that, to be in that role. And Officer Jimenez, I've just, you know, from you and, you know, your social media presence to hearing from students to, you know, the Blue in the School accounts, you know, from our elementary students. It's just been a really wonderful presence that you have provided in our schools. Um, we also have the larger partnership where, um, the city and the schools and the chamber all agreed to um, participate in the Equity Lab, which I think goes to part of what we're talking about, where we're all trying to kind of in parallel bring ourselves to a better place together. So, I think that was, it's just a fair time to, to highlight that. And yeah, I, I just want to thank you all for taking time to pause. We've had, obviously in the, in the history that Principal Belmont gave, we've had SROs in the, in our schools for quite some time. And this is the first time, um, that we've had this kind of conversation as a board and, and with you all. And, um, I appreciate your willingness to put in the time to sit together and talk about what is our collective vision in terms of really, um, providing the best support and services for our students. And I just, I love what I'm hearing. So thank you.
Excellent. Um, Director Connor, your virtual hand is still raised. Did you intend to commentary or are you? All done. All right. Um,
Sorry, I need to unmute. Yeah, I just had another quick question that was on my mind. Just curious about, um, what is the percentage of people of color on the Burnsville Police Force and of women?
Well, I can, um, answer that for you. So, um, we have about, we have seventy-five sworn officers. Um, I think we're at about fifteen of those being women. And we have about four persons of color. So some work to be done, um, to be sure. But, um, definitely always looking for those recruiting options. And that's, I think, um, Captain Stanger mentioned earlier, we've got a couple of CSOs um, that have come out of the high school. Uh, actually we've had about ten, I think it's about ten officers that have, um, graduated from Burnsville High School that are on our police force. So, um, we do look for that partnership and are always willing to look at, hey, how can we create those ways to recruit folks into our department? So we are more diverse. Um, so we can meet the needs of the community and that is important to us. So, um, and I would just mention, I, I wanted to thank Javier for sharing his story because I think that's one of the really important parts of this is just, everyone has a story, right? We all have a story about why we came into the jobs that we have. And especially in law enforcement, we really have these personal stories. And I think that's what starts to sort of break down some of these barriers, just bit by bit, where we can share and see that human aspect of, um, police and, and all people of, um, different backgrounds and colors and genders. So I think, um, you know, there's always work that we can do, um, to be better about that. But, uh, we're doing that work in the city as, um, Abigail mentioned and trying to find those differences, but celebrate that. And then our similarities too. So I think there's more, um, work to be done. But yeah, if you've got recruiting, um, ideas, we want to hear them. So we're definitely open to that.
Well, again, k- kudos to all of you. I mean, you're just doing, I mean, I, this is so awesome to hear that you're really reaching out and you seem to really care to the, about the community. Thank you.
Uh, Director Alt, for the follow-up?
And I promise I'll be brief. Um, so on the recruiting, I forgot to mention I, that this ties in beautifully with plans to develop the, um, criminal justice, law enforcement pathway, much like the education pathway where we're hoping to, um, help our students, you know, we've got diversity in our seats, in our schools. And for students that have a passion for education, for students that have a passion or believe that law enforcement is something, um, that is for them. Um, this is a great way to connect them both at the high school and, um, eventually when that pathway is created. I have no doubt that it'll, um, we'll, we'll probably have some sort of partnership, um, together to do that. So, um, looking to the future.
Yes, thank you. And I would just add just one thing with that, with the students. Sorry. You guys get me talking about all this stuff gets me really excited about partnerships. So I was supposed to go try to be quiet tonight and kind of let, um, Captain Stanger and Javier do their thing. But then I, I get going a little bit, but two, the two of our CSOs were actually really recruited by our SROs that, that, um, were at the school at the time and have taken, um, those guys on, you know, are mentoring them and helping them. And they've got quite a few years to go before they're ready to be police officers. But I think that's the excitement of that. Um, one of those, um, CSOs was Trevor, who, um, did a lot of work around the positive police interactions and wanted to build those bridges. And then, um, Fousey, um, uh, came on board as well. And so I think it's just, um, there's a lot of opportunity there. So we're really excited about it. So thanks for bringing that up, um, as well, Abigail. I think that's a great platform.
Uh, Director Said, you have your hand raised.
Um, well, thank you all, um, for being here with us tonight. I, this is just amazing. Um, be a, being a former high school student at Burnsville, um, I could definitely see before and after kind of, you know, I have this picture in my head. And, um, we are heading it to, into a beautiful light, right? Um, and though the past year has thrown a lot on us, right? And especially for police departments and people who are in law enforcement. We can all agree that, um, those issues were long before there. It, it just didn't service as it did in the last year or two. Um, so I did want to first comment and congratulate, uh, the police department on the mental health unit. Uh, that is amazing. Um, and the work that was done, um, to start that and, and make that part of, um, you know, the work that law enforcement does, because we all know that majority of, um, the calls and, um, the help that law enforcement give is majority of mental health issues that caused and link to other criminal activity or give family hardships. So kudos to that. Um, as far as, um, discipline in, in, in the school, in Burnsville High School. Um, yes, there's raging hormones and everything, right? We all understand that. So I just kind of want to understand, um, what is your take in your path that you are, um, taking to do better or go beyond what's been done in the past when it comes to discipline, um, using discipline with students? Um, when things get out of hands or when there's disagreements. Um, and then also, um, Officer, um, Javier, you mentioned the engagement part, how important engagement is. And, you know, that perception of changing our students' minds, that law enforcement is authority, right? Yes, I thought it's some people to respect, but that feeling of, um, that control that has really been manifested in many of our, um, communities of color, right? Um, and when you mentioned engagement and, um, been to know each student where they're at individually, I want you to know that really opens up, um, a lot more clarity in what law enforcement is really about is relationship building. And you have a lot of generations and, or, you know, in, or have changed a lot of eyes in the work that you do. Um, because you're changing the way they saw things and you're implementing something different each and every day. So these generations that are coming your way will, will be impacted in a very positive way compared to maybe my generation and what I've seen in regarding, um, law enforcement that are involved in schools. Um, I know that was long-winded, but I really applaud all the work that, um, the police department has done over the years. And, um, being a longtime resident here, um, I really just see the impact that's, that's, that's being taken. Um, and the good things that are happening, especially for people of color in our community. Um, but I lost my question and all that was the discipline piece. Um, how are, how is that being navigated?
And I can start it. I'll probably turn it over to Javier because he's there on a, a day and day basis. But that's a great question. And it's something that what we're talking about in this contract, that's clearly being delineated. Um, and although the, the trend has been where again, the officers are not there for school discipline. That's what we have school staff there for. And there's, there's a very clear delineation. And, and Officer Jimenez works very closely with the administration, um, whether this is a criminal issue or in most cases, a school discipline issue and dealing with it that way. We, we have no, uh, desire to, to put, get people, get a record for people. Again, there's so many different programs we have access to and that the school has access to. That's certainly the way we would prefer to go. So, um, Javier, do you want to talk specifically about that?
Yeah. So at least when it comes to the school discipline aspect of it, um, I have nothing to do with it. Um, if it's, uh, you know, some type of truancy or something like that, I let the, um, school administration take care of that. Obviously if there's some type of criminal matter, um, I, I have to, uh, enforce the law as well. Um, but with, with that said, I do everything in my power to not give citations, make arrests or anything like that. Um, if I do have to provide a citation or make an arrest, um, I usually send it over to Dakota County. Um, so, and put in a good word for them to be able to get into a diversion program. Um, Dakota County actually leads the state in most diversion programs for juveniles. Um, they do an amazing job and they have diversion programs for anything you can think of. Um, and usually once it gets there and they complete a program, this diversion program, that citation, that arrest goes off the record as if it never happened. Um, and that's what I try to push everything in that direction. Um, I, un- understandably that there is some, some cases that unfortunately I have no control over and the Dakota County has to make those judgments, um, that I can't make. Um, but I usually try to keep school discipline, um, uh, with the school and the, the district. And then anything that's criminal matter, I'll deal with it. But I, I, I take it or arrest is my very last resort. Um, I try not to get involved with the, with the school. Um, I'll make recommendations if, um, something needs to be a criminal matter. But, um, I do usually speak with the school staff, um, and I take their advice, um, because, um, ultimately this student needs to come back to the school and they need to be able to succeed. And I, I now want the best for them. So that's usually the way I approach the discipline aspect of it.
Thank you, Officer Javier.
Uh, excellent.
I was going to say, I guess I was muted again.
Yeah, go ahead.
Chair Miller, I was just going to add, um, the only thing I would add is that discipline, just in general, has become much more relational and, and, and kind of that wraparound restorative concept where, um, we would utilize our officers, just like we do our psychologists, our social workers in terms of support and in terms of helping to reach out and make those connections. And so oftentimes there might be a discipline issue, which is, you know, more or less, you know, a school matter. But that particular student may have a relationship with one of our officers. And so that conversation that might occur to help process what happened. Um, and so, uh, you know, just as we've talked a lot tonight about that engagement, the connecting, the relationship piece. Um, you know, there, that's a huge part of that front end of, of really helping students with what's behind usually most of the things that create a discipline problem. And, um, taking a much more holistic approach. So.
Thank you. Thanks for helping. All right. Well, this has been an absolutely excellent conversation, um, and very informative and beneficial. Um, not to, um, uh, not to make small of any of this, uh, I think it goes beyond, well, well, well beyond, uh, demonstrating that, uh, what the SRO has provided, they're, they're not security guards in our schools. They're there for a, a, a very deep and extended purpose of making connection with our community. And, and, and yes, ultimately it's the first, first and foremost to be, um, there for the safety of our, our kids and our staff. But, um, clearly that goes beyond, um, basic function. So we appreciate that. In fact, as this presentation was being made, um, conversations were occurring. Um, I had thought and Director Alt touched on this, uh, you know, it's, uh, it's probably something we ought to do every couple of years at least, um, not, not necessarily contract driven. We should just get together and talk a little bit about how things are going and let the board see that and have some visibility in that. So. Well, uh, um, Dr. Battle, let's try to put that on the long-term agenda for, uh, if you're going to have this conversation again. Um, you know, it would be my, as we go forward with the contract conversations, um, it, and I've expressed this before and, uh, in talking with, uh, Eric Cox, I was talking about this the other day also. It's my, you know, objective that, uh, we use this opportunity to build on the relationship that we've found it already and make it stronger and better for everybody involved, especially the kids that we're so, all here to serve. Um, you know, we, as we mentioned earlier, uh, as, as Burnsville as a district has dramatically changed over the years, um, and become more diverse. Um, this district has invested a, a fair amount of time, money and, and, uh, the other resources into programs, learning to, um, navigate that, uh, diversity, um, provide the toolsets, um, and, um, and, and communication points and such for our staff and our teachers to, to, to interact with that diversity. And while I am absolutely 100% sure that, uh, the officers receive great training at a state level and at your local organizational level. We, we would like to love to have you included in what training we have going on also. And I would hope you see that as a value add, you know, free training, what the heck, right? Um, and, um, no, I think the positive out of that too, beyond the fact that you, you, Officer Jimenez get the training or whoever's taking it, um, also it allows you and our Also, it allows you and our staff to talk with the same kind of communication points. You're using the same reference points when talking about situations and the same toolsets. So that we're on, and so they, so Principal Helkey's staff and you are aligned on the same page. So that would be my principal hope as we move forward with the contract to make sure we get some inclusion of that into the the future as we move this whole thing forward. So again, thank you though. Thank you, Officer Jimenez, for your time this evening. Another demonstration of how much you put into this, sitting and waiting for us. We often go too long on these things.
For our guest, Lee, I think we need to recognize the expanded and strengthened role of the board, student representatives. So Milk May stayed for the workshop. She was so instrumental in pulling together the student focus groups. And so that was a change this board requested that it would not be a single voice, but that we will bring in more student voices. So I just want to recognize her. And then that's, have a good night.
Yes, that's a great point. Thank you for your time tonight. Thank you, everybody. Captain Dom Stenger with the Burnsville Police Department and then Chief Schwartz, who had the opportunity to join us all. So appreciate it all. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you for having us. I really appreciate the time. Have a good night.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night.
Okay. Our work is not done though.
Right.
We are now going to, and Milk May, if it was not made painfully clear, you are welcome to go enjoy the rest of your evening, what's left of it. Please. Do. I would if I was you. So the next item in our workshop is to go through some initial thoughts for fiscal year 2022 budget. Dr. Battle, Superintendent will be bringing this forward and Lisa Ryder, Executive Director of Business Services. I will let you guys jump right into it.
Thanks. Before we go through the presentation, just wanted a few introductory remarks. So Lisa, tonight Lisa and I will share an update regarding the process for the development of the fiscal year 22 budget. And so it was good that you had the revised 2021 background. And so we're not going to reiterate some of those pieces. But we did want to give you an update about Governor Walz's budget and that process the legislature and the governor will take over the next few months. So a little bit about the governor's funding. He did propose 150 million for education. And he emphasized mitigation of the pandemic-related enrollment decline and to offer expanded summer school program and mental health support to students during the coming summer. He also did recommend an increase for E-12, so that's the early learning through 2022, 23. And so he, on the per people formula, as you heard earlier, Lisa Ryder explained he is offering 1% in the first year and 2.5% in the second year. Just wanted to highlight a couple of items of very specific items he mentioned that are in alignment to our work. So of course, early learning, an increase in English learner funding, career pathways. And then also helping to recruit and retain BIPOC staff, Black, Indigenous and people of color. And so many of the proposals do align to our programs as well as the legislative committee, your Board Legislative Committee about some things they think we would like to, you would like to make sure is prominent. What will happen next will be the February Budget and Economic Forecast, which is the end of February. And then the governor will adjust his budget as needed based on that forecast. And then the House and Senate will begin to develop their respective budgets to be unveiled in March. And then from March to June, the House, the Senate and Governor will work on the budget differences and hopefully will come to agreement by the middle of May. And we must have a budget approved by June 30th. And the new state budget takes effect July 1st. Couple of other notes. As we highlighted in the 2021 revised budget, we still don't know the full financial impacts of the pandemic, which makes it very unique in this new budget process. At the same time, we're trying to meet unprecedented education and support service needs of our students and employees. And so in addition to having to wait for what will occur with our state budget, we have the unknowns of the federal funding. And so the Biden-Harris administration has released that they are going to send states some more money and the priority is to get children back into schools. And so we have that unknown, but also any future guidance and mandate from MDE and MDH in response to the pandemic. I believe one of the board members, Director Said, you did ask about the variant. So the virus will dictate. And so we had that unknown. We may have to switch between learning models. And so as was shared in the fiscal year 21 revised budget, we are underspending for non-staff expenditures and activities and athletics while not in person. But now we're getting to bring back our elementary persons that we have to monitor and see about those expenditures. And we had that increase in fund balance. And so we all know we've had this added stress of living and working and learning in a pandemic. And so I, staff and I are really cognizant of the need to bring you recommendations that do not further cause anxiety to our students, families and staff. So before bringing budget adjustments, the staff and I will closely review budget proposals from the legislature, the governor and the Federal Department of Education to base on our assumptions to make the most solid recommendations to you. And so as information change, our assumptions may change. And so we are thinking we like to present what-if scenarios to you. So if the governor and legislature agree on 1-1, instead of the governor saying 1% in the first year and 2.5%, they end up with 1-1, we need to be able to show you the implications. And so it's really difficult to complete a final budget when there's so many unknowns. And so with that, I'll move on to a few slides in our presentation. And so thanks for pulling it up. So I gave you a little overview of what we're going to share tonight. You can go to the next slide. Go to the next slide. Click on the guiding change. So board members, starting with the facilities process, we used a guiding change process. And so we have developed a guiding change process for our fiscal year 22 budget. And there are three. First, you start with your guiding question. And so our guiding question is how do we optimize these resources for student learning? How will we continue to support our mission and priorities, balance the budget and leverage every funding source available? And we've identified the current reality, as you see in the first column, that's the column that will change. So as soon as we get more information from the federal government or something changes with the pandemic, so the current reality we see is very flexible. And then we've identified some unacceptable means that we will not hear the voices of our constituents is one as you see number six. We have to have multiple voices. And I think from the previous presentation, you see that we really do put an effort in listening to our constituents. And then the desired results. We have what's before you, what we hope to accomplish through this budget process. You can close that. And the next slide, excuse me, there's another hot link in there to budget goals, processes and timeline. And so you'll see once again what our goals are with the budget that are aligned to those desired results. And then we've mapped out by month, some key processes, key tasks. And then we've outlined what we're going to do as the executive leadership team, board actions. And it's really based on your board planning document. And so there may be some adjustments as we go through when we find more information. And so with that, we'll go to the next slide that Lisa Ryder is going to take over. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. As we've talked about with the revised budget, the starting point in creating the adopted FY22 budget is really around the enrollment. So we have spent a great deal of time, you heard a report back in November, board members did at the time regarding what our fall enrollment was. And with that information, then we have also used a model then to project forward what we think that enrollment will be. Now, this year is a little bit tricky and unique for many schools. This fall resulted in a loss of enrollment that they were not planning on. And they attributed that mostly to the pandemic. For us, we were anticipating a reduction in enrollment largely because of us closing three schools and changing boundaries and the work that was done in the previous years and knowing that that was going to have some type of an impact on our community. What we learned is that we basically kind of hit that mark and our enrollment came in as we had anticipated. But I think it's a combination potentially of what everyone else experienced related to the pandemic as well as our circumstances with the closing of the three schools. And so the hard part now moving forward and projecting that forward is trying to determine how much was what, you know? And so knowing that we have to take an assumption and you go with it. And as Dr. Battle indicated, those assumptions might shift based on new information that we learn. So at this point in time, our enrollment that we're assuming for FY22, and this is just K-12, so it does not include our VPK, it does not include our early childhood special ed, that number will be at the fall count a 7,296 number. And for my end of year numbers that I use for revenue projection, I will be using a 7,311 number. Further assumptions will be included in our projection models. And the fact of the matter is, when we begin this process, if you want to go to the next slide, we start from this current reality picture that we talked about in the revised budget. This is kind of our summary page for when we begin the process of just using a straight, flat, broad brush across everything, right? So I might use some formulas in here that just say increase expenditures by three and a half percent and increase or don't increase revenues, but just keep it the same kind of thing. But the point is, as we're beginning our projection process, our next step is internally to work on that model, our budget model, that's going to bring together all of the levy information that the board has already approved, that does fund for us the levy dollars for the school year of FY22. So we know that, that's a given, right? We've already identified the level of taxpayer participation in that budget. And so we can put that in. And then I start doing the line item revenue budget. And at this moment, I didn't check today, but at this moment, there's, to my knowledge, not a current what-if model out there by the state. But we're going to need to kind of watch for that because if I use the previous year's model, it gets us close. But, you know, they can have different changes and formulas and things of that nature too. So we're looking for that what-if model to be able to build that so we can get the state aid calculations then. And then you make assumptions about your local revenues and what the impact will be based upon our circumstances. When we begin the expenditure budget building of our assumptions so that we know kind of what we were anticipating would happen and to be able to create these what-if scenarios that Dr. Battle referred to, I'm going to be taking a look at our revised budget that we just had you approve and breaking it down by the various different object levels as we refer to them and identifying, well, okay, so for instance, I don't believe the transportation contract, if it were, you know, there's a certain percentage it may increase. It may not be 3%. It may not be 1%. You know what I mean? So you want to use what you best know. And so those types of assumptions are going to be applied to each thing differently. Utilities will look differently than supplies, for example. Okay? And so we want to do it at that level because then as I roll everything up and project it forward, it gives us a little bit better picture of exactly what that expenditure role should look like. Okay? And so that's the process that next needs to be done and that it is quite extensive, but that is the work that we need to do in order to prepare the type of opportunity for you to be able to look at what-if scenarios. As we take a look at the next slide, I just want to make, you know, we kind of touched on this earlier. For every average daily membership, which is what a student who attends school with us from the beginning of the year to the end of the year and is with us the whole time, that's what we call a 1ADM, one average daily membership. You can receive funding for that same student up to a 1.2 if you provide additional targeted services for that child. And it's based on the number of minutes above and beyond the typical expected minutes for the school year. And so that's the terminology used in our revenue calculations. And I just want to share that when you take into consideration the general education formula and the various different other categorical funding that there is, gifted talent, compensatory, referendum, all these different things, the amount of dollars that we receive per ADM is at this time 11,812. So when we talk about what is the assumption for enrollment, it makes a difference as to what number we work with, right? And that can change that what-if scenario. On the second bullet, the darker bullet, it is talking about our current expenditures. And so here too, it's like if I were to take just one big broad brush across expenditures, say it's three and a half percent, and I apply it to our expenditure revised budget, that would seem to imply then that it would be 4,699,812. But keep in mind, as I mentioned, in that current revised budget, there's a lot of federal dollars. And those federal dollars are going to roll forward, right? So it's best and most important that we really break this down. And that's the next step that needs to be done on my end. So let's go to the next slide. And, you know, as we talk about process, you've approved the revised budget. So that's accomplished. Our next step, as I said, is to build that new budget model with our revised budget data. And we want to then create some preliminary projections for the FY22 budget. This would then become the basis of our assumptions. And that's what we would work with to determine then the various different levels of considerations the board may want to look at. So one thing I want to point out is, could you go back a slide for me? One more. There we go. At the bottom, we have two ways of looking at this. The unassigned fund balance is what the board could focus on. And in addition, there is the variant. And if you look, that's the 1, 2, 3, fourth line down of numbers. And so if you're looking for a balanced budget, you'd be looking for that to be nearly zero, the difference between revenues and expenditure. So understanding what the focus is as we build this budget will make a huge difference in how it is that we proceed. And those are the conversations that we'll need to have as we move forward. But you need more detailed information from us and I just need the time to get that accomplished. Okay, so let's go ahead and move back forward again to the timeline. One more. There we go. So tonight was the approval of the revised FY21 budget. On February 11th, we have then an identified workshop. And we do have conversations on a regular basis. We have some, six meetings we have set up. We're halfway through those with our administrative team. And in that conversation, we've got some information we've pulled together for them to be able to use to share with their staff and with their families. Just really kind of educating people on what school finance is about, how this works, what this might look like. And then in March, you know, as we get closer towards that time period and we learn more about what's happening at the state level as well, we're going to need to be making some we're gonna need to be making some, some um, decisions around what it is we're going to assume as we move forward and developing this budget on a line item basis, because there's quite a bit of work that gets done from our staffing perspective that Director Silvine and his team works very closely with all of the departments and the principals to accomplish. And then once they get that done and accomplished in HR, it gets turned over to finance where it then gets placed into a line item budget. And that gets pulled together in preparation for a June budget that you can then review in the first meeting in June and approve by the second meeting in June. That's kind of how that timeline and, and uh, flow will probably look as we move forward. With a lot happening, as Dr. Battle said, at the state level. And um, what happens there does impact us, and this is always a kind of chicken and egg thing, and it's like at some point we have to kind of move forward with some assumptions. And that, as we know, is why we also have the revised budget that we typically do every year, because those assumptions might need to have shift, right? Might need to shift. So um, the next slide, it talks about our um, communication with our staff and families. Like I mentioned, our principals and directors are prepared to do that, and we've created that school finance 101 for them. I wanted to share with you on the next slide, the um, presentations are here linked for you, so you can take a look at them. The Minnesota Association of School Business Officers or officials, that's the, the group I work with, MASBO we call ourselves, and um, they put together budget 101 videos. And so they first did the, the video in English, and upon our request last year, they, they were um, kind enough to also translate that into Spanish and Somali. So we want to make sure that all of our families have this available to them and they can view it. It is a, a video that goes very quick. But it's, it's also very short, so you can easily listen to it a couple of times if you choose. It will have um, key messages and communications, has provided support for our principals in what it is that's shared out with families as well. And we're looking to get some feedback also from families regarding just budget in general. So with that, um, that kind of sums up kind of our approach towards the adopted FY22 budget process. And um, I thank you for your time.
Excellent. I see that Director Chester has, for hand raised, go ahead, please.
Yes, um, is there a possibility to pull up the slides again? Please, because I've got questions for slide, especially the one with the revised budget on it. Because I know, um,
Five, I believe.
Yeah, so um, one thing, um, I just wanted to, to note um, for our newer board members, that when we as a board adopted the, the budget, the, the adopted budget, we knowingly selected to have the unassigned fund balance at 6.86%. And that's something we can do as a board based off of our dis- discussions and how we want to approach the budget. And so even though that it's ideal to be at 8%, I just wanted to note that the, we as a board last spring knowingly selected to, to go lower than, than the recommendation. So that was, that's just that one. So go to, go to another, the next slide. I'm not sure if it's the next slide. Okay, so on this slide, so if I were to read this and going into budget mode, if we were anticipating a reduction in enrollment and that would equal 5.4%, and we're going to have an increase of expenses of 3.5% or 4.6%, we're looking at a fiscal 2022 budget deficit of 10 million that we would need to be looking at and making adjustments for. Am I reading that right? Hypothetically, hypothetically.
That would be true, except for the fact that we had adjusted our expenditures coming into this year to address the revenue change, right? Because our assumptions, we're assuming that 465 damn uh, ADM reduction, okay? So coming into this year, we planned and, and addressed that piece. So now we're really focusing more now on probably the latter part. But keep in mind that that $134 million includes $4.1 million of federal expenditures that, you know, we kind of need to back out, because those are typical expenditure.
Right, um, now in other types of businesses, especially where you're not working, like I don't work anywhere that there's a bargaining unit in the nonprofit sector, um, based off of our budget expenses, knowing our revenues are going to be shorted, we as staff, none of us as staff received any raises this year, or we had hiring freezes. How do, how do we with our bargaining unit think about having to cut expenses with the anticipation that's built into contracts of, of um, raises in them?
Right, so our current contracts are in place through the 21 school year. Um, and they would all be up for um, negotiation and determination by the board for then forward. With regard to the assumptions that we would use within our budget model related to those contract negotiations, that is uh, one of those assumptions that will need to be determined in our budget model as we move forward. And would be one of those things that we, what if it's this, and what if it's that? And so we'll be um, developing a method so that you can understand that impact with the uh, calculations having been predetermined.
And then some of the other very, because I'm understanding that we might be seeing various scenarios of, of budgets based off of like, okay, are we going to get one and one, one and two, two and two, blah, blah, blah. At the federal level, because that's something I'm interested in, especially in terms of um, supporting getting for the federal government to pay special ed at the rate it should. Knowing that we've had some changes politically, do we anticipate maybe seeing some of that increase in special ed support, or is that something we, we as being part of the legislative community have started to be advocating for?
I, I can appreciate the av- the avocation. I think that um, I've been here 15 years and I just haven't seen much change at the federal level. However, they're hearing us at the state level, and they're working to do things towards, if you, if you read the governor's recommendation for budget, one of the items he is calling out is how do we keep it from increasing when we talk about our special education cost subsidy? And so they're, they're understanding the necessity for them to control that. But uh, we all know and understand too that the, the lack of dollars availability is what the ish, the hangup is, right? Because it has grown so significantly over time. So I think that there is a lot of attention at the state level. I, I'd be curious to see what can happen at the federal level, and that would be refreshing if that would see some change.
Director Chester, I, I previously mentioned MSBA and AMSD. Um, and so as part of their legislative platform, they have called that out. And so that is the advocacy that uh, parents and community members can take for that matter. And so it's really important, uh, we do, we finalize the legislative platform for 191. And that gives a tool to our parents and community members as well.
Yep, that's awesome. I'm counting on that. Then one final thing, I love the idea of providing uh, fi- you know, school finance budgets 101 to, for, for family understanding. But that's going to be occurring before we get um, the recommended adjustments presentation, and that's usually where community members have comments and thoughts. And so wondering if we might be looking at um, opportunities um, there to gather additional comments and thoughts from the, the community when the recommendations become more public versus just understanding the 101. And then also knowing that there was something presented in March, was it March? And then there was, and then we're voting in June. I was just wondering if there's going to be any dialogue or, or modifications that may happen in April and May before the approval.
So with regard to the feedback, um, we want to start out with sharing enough information with um, people to pique their interest, get them, um, so they understand that we're going to be talking budget here. It is true that uh, the, the interest level increases particularly if there's adjustments to the budget that will directly impact families. And so we want to make sure that they know how to hear about that information, where to be watching for it, and then what feedback we can offer for them as far as opportunities. And so I, I can't say that I know exactly what that's gonna firmly look like, but I, I know that that's, that the key point right now is to let people know where we are in our process and the fact that this is the beginning of the dialogue. With regard to the other point of timing, just know that um, there are contract requirements and statute requirements for our staffing processes that does require us to essentially make some determination by the end of March so that we can meet those requirements in order for things to happen um, by the time we're talking about for the next fiscal year. With that having been said, much of what we talk about for our adopted budget is based upon estimates. And it is based upon these assumptions, right? So as things do shift and change, that's why the board is approving a total revenue and a total expenditure, because it does need to give us a little bit of latitude to be able to shift as we need to in order to be prepared for the, be prepared for the fall.
Great, thank you. That helps a lot.
Okay, Director Alt.
Thank you, Chair Miller. All right, so I know, you know, just calling out for new board members as part of this process, and Lisa, you had touched on it, that there are assumptions um, built in about salaries um, in the process. One thing that I know I appreciated understanding when I was first, uh, when I was a new board member, is that um, in terms of the, the contracts, the salaries and benefits of our, of our employees, if, eh, even if the board chooses a zero, 0% increase on contracts, there still is in, an increase incurred in our budget. So our job is to figure out, okay, knowing that if, if we don't add anything to the schedule, but we still incur an increase, what does that mean for our decision-making? And how does that impact the salary assumptions that Lisa's working with? Let's see, Lisa, I just wanted to confirm, so you're working with assumptions of 7296 enrollment in fall and 7311 end of year?
Correct. And that's just K-12.
And that's just K-12, correct? Let's see, oh, just a couple of things. Just comments that I wanted to make, because this is, I mean, this is really helpful for me just to understand, you know, okay, this is what we're turning from the, the adopted and now looking at, you know, at the revised and, and looking at, at next year. I would, I think it would be helpful for us as a board to just receive a template when, when you do come forward with those adjustments, that they are um, organized by business unit. So that we can clearly see, you know, in the same way that our budget is organized by budget unit, unit, the adjustments and line items also show up in the, in, in the um, in the biz budget units. Um, I think that, that would be help, I, I know it would be helpful for me. I have a feeling it probably will be helpful for the new board members. And then also knowing that there are so many parts this year in particular. And it's kind of, you know, a juggling act. Trying to be clear with us as you come forward with different iterations. In terms of, okay, this is what we talked about last time, and these are the changes that we're, that we're coming back to you with. I think that'll be, that'll be really helpful for us just to have that, you know, that sequence of events to be able to tie our conversations together. And then, you know, finally, just, you know, knowing that staff, every single year, staff is impacted by this, right? And at the same time, I know that each year that we have made cuts, um, and last year was no different. We cut staff, and then um, new assumptions come forward about, you know, we learn new facts after the budget is adopted. And we find ourselves having to fill empty positions. So I think it's, it's just fair to let our, our employees know, and you know, we all have to plan our lives. We all have to, you know, plan to support our families. That it's a pretty fair assumption if we do our jobs right, right? If we're conservative enough in our, in our adjustments and yet not so conservative, that at some point we will, you know, we are going to have, we always have empty positions that have to be filled. And, and you know, that's just kind of where we are. Unfortunately, um, we lose some great staff, people get, you know, are notified that they have to be let go. Um, and then we find out, oh, wait, we need you. So um, it's not, and you know, part of the, the challenging part of being, you know, part of this decision-making process is knowing that, and knowing that that's just where we are. So that's all I had to say.
Okay, thank you. Director Word, you, yes, there you are. You had your hand raised to, like to speak?
Yes, so um, in tying in the um, virtual academy that we're, you know, waiting to get approval for, and if we were to get approval for that, so what if, when is the soonest that that would be up and running? Would that be in the 22-year cycle? Is the projection for enrollment taking into consideration if we were to gain any enrollment for having that opportunity? Being able, you know, to project that as well into the forecast of, and what happens if, you know, that were to happen? If we were to, you know, gain enrollment based on something like, you know, getting virtual academy running, how does that impact? Well, we've already made projections.
So for the virtual academy, it will, um, the online academy will be treated as another site. And so um, as the enrollment is identified and we compare it to what we are using in our assumptions, depending upon the timing of, of that enrollment process and what that looks like, which I can't speak to at this moment. If it is prior to us finalizing the budget, we can potentially adjust for that if it's significant. Typically, what occurs is we um, we plan for the assumptions that we're using for enrollment, and we plan for that staffing and we roll with that. And then if we get to the fall and we find that enrollment has significantly increased, then we'll, we'll make adjustments and, and um, we'd be hiring in the fall, which isn't ideal, granted, but um, it is what sometimes we might have to do. I haven't seen that for a while in our district, but uh, we can be absolutely hopeful for that. And I think it's a matter of um, people understanding the opportunities. It's hard to say at this moment exactly how families are going to feel come fall, depending upon the vaccines, how far across our population, people have had the chance to, to take advantage if they choose. So that could make a big difference in, in how people uh, respond to the opportunities that are made available to them in the fall as well.
Okay. Any additional comments or questions? All right, I have a couple of things. Dr. Battle, you mentioned the, the governor's proposal, I think that was even today or yesterday. You, I think you said one and two and a half, is that?
Yep.
No, um, I know it's all very, get, just getting started. No, um, I know it's all very, get, just getting started. I've missed, I thought what I read in the news was that was like an additional, like he was asking for more than one. But it, but, but you think it's the, it's a total of one and two and a half, right? Is that what you heard?
On the per pupil formula.
Yeah.
One the first year and then two point five.
Okay, which is, isn't actually, for all the ruckus it caused, that isn't actually that big of an increase that in, based on historical opening negotiations on budgets, but whatever, they'll work it out. The other piece I heard, just FYI, I don't know if, I know we don't have a huge amount of kids that go off to private school, but there was some uh, there was some component that was, I heard uh, that, that he has proposed some funding for loss of uh, revenue for students that went to private school. I guess under the idea that they were going there on, because COVID and they could get seven, uh, five days a week of in, in-person uh, instruction. Um, just keep that in the back of your mind. I know when I, in the past, when we've looked at our open enrollment uh, models, that private isn't necessarily the biggest predator that we have, it's our neighboring districts, but, but regardless, um, that is something that caught my interest. We might, I don't, depending on how they end up landing on that, that might be of some value, so. Um, anyway. So, thank you for this, is a good start to the process. I um, I, I'm gonna go ahead and not pull any punches on the next thing I talk about here. Director Alt mentioned this a little bit, but for the benefit of our new members, what you're looking at here now is reality of, obviously, and when you, if you go just back to the beginning of the evening, go back to the first, one of the first, what is it, maybe the first presentation we had on the adjusted uh, twenty budget. You might have noticed in the, the uh, slide deck there, there was a little bit about where funding is and where we spend it. At the end of the day, we spend roughly about eighty percent of our uh, expenditures are in uh, human capital. And um, and, and a significant part of that is in the instruction, but actually, I don't know, over eighty, some percentage is in the instruction side. So I just want to be very clear, as we start talking about cutting, cutting things in the budget, you're talking about teachers losing their jobs. Uh, and I, I, yeah, you know, we just have to start there so you understand that. That's what we're talking about. That is the only way to this. We can't uh, you know, find more uh, copy paper in the back room or something and save millions of dollars in the budget, so. One thing I noticed that's missing in this, Dr. Battle and, and uh, Director Ryder is that there isn't a request for any kind of guidance here. This is very, you know, it's an informative deck. And I'm gonna take the initiative to put a little bit of that, give you a little bit of that this evening in conversation with everybody. And that's flipping back to the slide where we talked a little bit about the unsigned fund balance because um, this is, as, as uh, Director Chester alluded to earlier, this is a conversation that we'll, we will have and um, you need to think a little bit on, everybody. I think earlier when um, Ms. Ryder spoke about the, about the numbers, she mentioned that we have a, and I don't, I think you used the word policy, but I don't actually think it is a policy, Lisa. I think it's a, I don't know what the technical definition is, but it's, it's a directive of this board, has long time been that it was eight percent. Go ahead.
Policy that does call out the eight.
It's in pol- literally district policy. Oh, okay, well, I stand corrected then. Now that I, you say that, I think I, maybe I have read that, okay. And at one time it was what, thirteen, fifteen percent, something like that, preceding that, uh?
It has been as high as fifteen, yep.
Yeah, and so just know that previous board iterations of this board made a conscientious effort or decision to move that down from wherever it was, fifteen, thirteen, down to eight. Um, and, and that, a lot of that had to do with uh, with the hopes and dreams were put into Vision one ninety-one that, that we knew enrollment was decreasing and that maybe it would turn around some of that. And it has had some, I think it, it, I know enrollment looks terrible if you look at a slope uh, graph on it, but it, there has been a lot of uh, probably would have been a lot worse if we had not done a lot of the things that we have done in, in this district. So the, I, well, the point I want to make is the eight percent number is, it isn't, it is in policy, granted, but it is an aspiration. And it is the, it, it is also, is an aspiration set on the intention of the board who's in charge of the budget at the time, and that's us. So, you know, we need to start thinking about, because that's our safety net. But at the same time, if you um, cut out orchestra, then that might very really be a possible thing that's on the board, we're cutting off. You're not going to bring it back a couple of years from now if enrollment turns around. There are things that will get cut out of the programming and that, they're gone. And if you lose a percent or two on your unassigned fund balance and save that programming, that's an alternate, you know, tho- those are the weight, the, the balances you're going to have to start thinking about and considering as we're looking at our options. The reality of it is we can't obviously run that fund balance down to zero, it would be, it would be um, it would be uh, inappropriate for us, it would be um, and, and, you know, it wouldn't be a proper management or fiduciary responsibility to the district. In, 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 not only that, we would technically lose our jobs because I think about that point where the state comes in and takes over, right at zero or something like that. But um, but we need to find a balance in there philosophically as we're talking about the cuts that we'll be looking at, how much we're willing to put out on the line in exchange for the programs that are going away. And one other thing I just wanted to make a comment about. Director Chester was mentioning the, adding up the numbers and what the reality of the vol- the amount of money at the cut with enrollment. The one, one thing you remember is when you lose a body of, of students, you know, you may not, you may no longer need that X, that third section of fourth grade at X school or whatever. And there's, so there's sort of some natural attrition of uh, of, of cuts, we would almost say that happened with enrollment. And then in addition to that, we have to look at, I would almost call it the true cuts we have to make. So the, you know, the, again, it takes some time to get used to processing all this as we work through the budget process, so. I don't expect you to have immediate answers to the questions about unsigned fund balance unless you want to speak about it right now and throw your, throw something on the table about it. It looks like Director Alt, you have your hand up, so feel free to jump in if you have a few things to say about that.
Well, I just, I guess the question is, um, Dr. Battle, your assumption was that you've presented your assumptions and then you're going to talk with staff as, I mean, did you want to have, did you want us to have a conversation tonight about, you know, enrollment assumptions and?
No, I think uh, Chair Miller said this was information. And I think he's asking the board that one of the key questions they have to think about when we come back is that fund balance.
And enrollment, I mean, that was.
Yes, so if we say we are projecting a su- set amount in enrollment and we give the rationale why, you may say that's too much or too little. And then Lisa has to go back and put it in, but it's based on trends and you know, and then the other questions that will have to come up. So we know there'll be increases uh, in utilities, probably, we don't know. And you never know with our Minnesota winter, you know, you get a winter, it's warm and you save on utilities. Then you have a winter where it's four weeks straight below zero. So those little things will come in and say, based on this, so it's really those big questions as to, a direct Chair Miller said.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to be clear that we, you know, I, especially given that we have a new makeup of this board that we, that you uh, give you the, afford you, Dr. Battle and your staff, I don't want you to go do a bunch of work, come back and have your uh, you know, your recommendations and they run completely afoul of what the intentions of this board would be as a body. So um, that's why I wanted to get those things kind of, those are kind of the, some of the key points that we spend of more future time talking around, but you guys should put that in your mind and think a little bit about those things as we move forward. Okay, any last, uh, yes, uh?
One more thing, so um, for our newer board members too, Lisa usually comes in with a really nifty little spreadsheet so that if we wanted to make, say like, we wanted to say like, well, maybe we should lower expectations for enrollment. What does it look like here? How does it adjust? So that we can start making decisions when we start seeing the initial scenario and then we can, as a board, kind of say, well, we're in consensus and maybe thinking enrollment may let, you know, let's project enrollment here, let's, you know, do that. So um, I like that flexible worksheet.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great point, yeah. Uh, Lisa will ask for that and, as we move into the next steps, please. I know that uh, Leslie indicates, I think you said usually does, I think actually last year was the first time we had a really good work. I'm not, you, previous wasn't good, but the, we, that's been a sort of a development thing we've come across in the last few years. So where we landed last year was excellent with that, gave us an opportunity to game the thing and, and come up with some alternative options and stuffs. Thank you.
Yeah, so that's what the what-if was referring back to what you did last year. So what if we did this and Lisa would run it uh, right there so you could see the impact?
Okay. All right, we are going to, and then with that, adjourn uh, from our workshop, we will be adjourning to a closed session as permitted by Minnesota Statute thirteen D dot zero three to discuss pro pay. What we're gonna do here is take five minutes. I have ten ten on my clock, so around ten fifteen we'll re-adjourn or re, yes, come together, um, join, I guess, rejoin. Erin, you will uh, take care of that five minutes of shutting down the recording, is that correct? Or shutting down the live stream, excuse me, continue to record.
Yes, I'll take care of that.
Okay, so for those at home uh, watching, thank you for attending tonight's uh, uh, regular meeting and our workshop. And you can find us uh, meeting again, um. I guess we don't have our next regular meeting scheduled on the calendar here. In February. Have a good evening, thank you. And the rest of you just hang on out.